Good evening. I am Cecilia Taylor, the Mayor of Menlo Park, and I want to welcome you to the July 9th special and regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than ten speakers on an item. First, I would like to do roll call and introduce City Council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs is joining virtually using provisions from the Brown Act. In chambers with myself are City Council members Maria Dorr and Betsy Nash. Councilmember Jen Woolison will be absent. Staff present is City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stoltay, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Taylor, and again echoing a welcome to our special and regular July 9th City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, we'll ask you to engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. I would also like to alert the public that we are currently recruiting for our park and recreation and library commissions. More information can be found on our website at menlopark.gov/commissions. That concludes my instructions and introductions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you Ms. Heron. The next item is Item C, closed session. We will begin with the closed session item. City Clerk Heron, can you please call for public comment on Item C1 and C2?
Yes, thank you again Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on closed session Item C1, conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, or closed session Item C2 pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 regarding labor negotiations, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our closed session items, C1 and C2. Saying no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Now the City Council will adjourn this meeting and convene in closed session. We will reconvene the regular meeting by 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Having our City Council back at our in-person and virtual dais. Mayor Taylor, you may recall the meeting to order.
Good evening. I am Cecilia Taylor, the Mayor of Menlo Park, and I want to recall our meeting to order for our July 9th special and regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council members, staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than ten speakers on one item. The next item is roll call. I would like to reintroduce City Council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs is joining us virtually using provisions from the Brown Act. And City Council chambers are myself, Mayor Taylor, and City Council members Maria Dorr and Betsy Nash. Staff present include our City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stoltay, City Attorney Nira Doorty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please call, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again echoing a welcome to our special and regular July 9th City Council meeting for members of the public who wish to provide a comment on tonight's agenda. When the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are participating in person, we ask that you can complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. I'd also like to announce that we are currently recruiting for our park and recreation and library commissions. For more information, we ask you visit menlopark.gov backslash commissions. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. The next item is report out from closed session. I would like to introduce our City Attorney Nira Doorty for a report out from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. There is no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is item G, agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members or staff by pulling, by pulling items. Sorry, let me go back. Agenda review is to check in with City Council members and city staff if they want to pull items from the consent calendar. Currently, staff is requesting to pull consent calendar item J three on the City Council's procedure manual. Does the City Council wish to pull any items off of the consent calendar or informational items? Thank you. Does the City Council desire to modify the order of the agenda? The next item is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. In some instances, speaker time may be limited. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. Therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up by the public other than to provide general, general information. At this time, I will call for general public comment. Ms. Heron, can you call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide a comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me, the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press star nine now. Okay, and this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is presentations and proclamations. This evening, we have one proclamation and one presentation. The proclamation is item I one Parks and Recs Recreation Month. Since 1985, people in the United States have celebrated Parks and Recreation Month in July to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of parks and recreation. Parks and Recreation agencies nationwide are recognizing the month with summer programs, events, contests, commemorations, and celebrations. The services that Parks and Recreation professionals provide are vital to our community. From protecting open spaces and recreation professionals providing vital, that are vital to our community. Do not have my glasses this evening. From protecting our open spaces and natural resources to help, to helping to fight obesity and providing activities and resources for all people. Parks and Recreation Month encourages everyone to reflect on the exponential value parks and recreation professionals bring to the communities. Here to accept the proclamation is our Library and Community Services Supervisor, Tricia Mullin. The next item on our, on our agenda is the presentation. Item I two, our annual environmental quality commission report out. I would like to introduce our EQC Chair, Jeff Schmidt.
Um, Mayor Taylor, if I could, before we get to item I two, can we do public comment on I one?
Yes. Ms. Heron, can you please call for public comment on item I one?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our proclamation item I one Parks and Recreation Month, if you are in person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand
Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And this is the final call for public comment on our proclamation item I one. Seeing no hands or cards. I can return it to the mayor and we can go to item I two. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next agenda item is our presentation by our EQC Chair, Jeff Schmidt.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, council members Nash and Dorr, and members of city staff and residents. My name is Jeff Schmidt. I'm the Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission, and I have the honor of representing a very active and busy commission for the city. We've had a really busy year and have a really good, strong collaborative team and we'll go fairly quickly because I've only got about ten minutes. So. Wait, Judy, which one? Is it the top button, Judy? Oh, there we go. Okay, yeah, newbie problems here. So there's a basic agenda. I'll skip through this fairly quickly. These are the members of the commission itself. The basic purpose of the commission is to advise on matters for climate change, environmental protection, and sustainability. We've got a couple of new members who have just joined, but it's a dynamic group, as I mentioned. The main roles and responsibilities, hopefully you had a chance to read this in the pre-deck, but there's four main priorities that we have. One being the Climate Action Plan, the second being climate resilience and adaptation and making sure we're prepared for climate change that's happening now. The third is urban canopy, and the fourth is green and sustainable initiatives. And that's a bit of a catch-all category for things that we work on and making sure we can fit that into the work plan. But those are the four main priorities, and I'll touch on a little more detail for each one. So the first section is really looking back and organized by priorities. I would say the bulk of our work has been around updating the Climate Action Plan. And we're in the final sort of five-year cycle of the plan. So we spent a lot of time not looking at the overall goals themselves, but looking at what we need to do in this last five years to hit some of our, some of the goals that we've outlined. So I, we've listed the six that are there. Each action was discussed by the full commission in quite a bit of detail. We would form a lot of subcommittees. We would unform them as the action got done, but a very participatory process, both bringing in outside comment, but also the expertise of the commission itself. And essentially, we prioritized actions one, three, and five, which were building electrification, electric vehicle charging, and eliminating fossil fuels in city operations. I'd say Ori and team did a fantastic job with number five. There wasn't a ton that the EQC did, but there was a lot of real direct engagement around building electrification and around electric vehicle charging. And then we listed some examples down there of the ways that the EQC sort of helped update the Climate Action Plan itself. If I jump ahead to priority number two, this was a recognition around resilience and adaptation. What I would say is, you know, climate change is here now. I think we have just gone through a week of what that really means. Extreme heat, storms, power outages, wildfires. So we can't just focus on the mitigation aspects and the future temperature rise. We really have prioritized looking at, you know, if it's ninety-five degrees this summer, where can I go to get cool and be protected from the heat? And I think that was a quote that I heard in attending a meeting in Bellhaven. You know, that's, these are real concerns. So moving forward, we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to address that as a commission, but that's, this is a very big focus for the EQC. And we've looked at expanding cap six from just sea level rise to this broader idea of adaptation and resilience. So priority number three is urban canopy. I think most of you probably heard us talk about this a lot. This is really just recognizing that the canopy plays a critical role in our ecosystem and our communities. We, through the actions of the city council and through staff, we were able to make the Urban Forest Management Plan a tier-one priority in the budget and allocate two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the CIP budget for that. That essentially delivers a forty-year tree management strategy for the city. The good news is we're already planting a lot of trees, but as we get funding for this and as this starts to become a reality, this is going to continue to be a focus for the EQC as well. So that's priority number three. And then priority number four, as I mentioned, is a bit of a catch-all category. This is just a list of some of the miscellaneous projects we worked on. You know, work with Chief Norris on the Tesla pilot for the police department electrification permit streamlining. I think most of you are familiar with a lot of that work. And we did feel it was important to put, this is a truly, I've been inspired because this has been a truly collaborative effort between the EQC and city staff. You know, it's a, it's a really solid partnership. So a lot of this work happens. We tried to outline how one example down at the bottom kind of happened. EQC played a role, city staff played a role, city council played a role, and I think that's a really good model for the future. So other activities, I'm not going to read all these, but just to sort of prove the point that it's been a very busy year with EQC and staff. There's been a lot of stuff we've been involved with, and I think a lot of great achievements as a commission and as a city, a lot to be proud of. And then I also wanted to add a few comments. I think these are some of our folks who regularly attend EQC meetings. I would say one of my kind of personal goals as chair is to get more residents involved, to increase the resident engagement in the commission itself and have more people join and comment and be able to have a voice into this. But happy that we have the people that we do who come on a pretty regular basis. So looking forward, I'll go through these fairly quickly as well, so we have plenty of time for questions or comments. We, actually, when we created this, it was sort of blank, and we sat down as an EQC and we said, all right, what do we want to, what do we want to work on future forward? And we'll still be working on implementing the cap plan with a focus mostly on building electrification, reducing vehicle miles traveled, and climate resilience and adaptation. The one that I mentioned, that's moving from just sea level rise to what are we doing about climate change that's here today? So that will be, there will be new subcommittees that are formed and are already forming, and the work will go on. That's probably priority number one for the commission, far and away. A second core idea is, how do we work cross-commission? And we've started to explore this idea of, you know, the more we know about the city, housing is connected to environment, is connected to transportation, is connected to all these things. So what other projects where, say, the planning commission, the housing commission, and the climate team can work together? And so we're really looking at, the city staff is helping us explore, what would that look like in other projects where we can collaborate a little bit better? The other thing that's happening that I think is more legacy for the EQC is, the EQC started being, started out being a lot about trees. I think it was called the Beautification Commission in the very beginning, and then it moved to a tree focus and then a Climate Action Plan focus. But we're starting to look again at the value of trees, and we're starting to say, it might be tough to update the ordinance, but we're starting to look at the administrative guidelines, and can we update those to reflect a higher value that trees play in our community? Public health, quality of life, shade, climate change, all those things. We just want to look at those again, and the city staff's done a great job of helping us tee up that discussion. So that's going to start pretty quickly. And then the last thing I'll say is, we brainstormed a series of future-forward ideas that we'll incorporate in our work plan. One is, can we host a future meeting in the Bellhaven Community Campus? I think we literally borrowed that idea from either a city council meeting or a planning commission meeting, but somebody on the EQC picked that up and said, that's a great idea. We should try to do an EQC meeting in the new community campus, which is amazing if you haven't been. Sharing ideas and best practices with the Menlo Park City School District. So a few of us are involved with Kristen, and her team is advisors. They're looking at climate action plans for the school district. And so how do we share our expertise and best practices with them? We don't do the work, but we've already forged a lot of those trails with the school district. So we're looking at ways we can partner with them. And then along those same lines, deepening student engagement in the EQC. So council member Dorr actually kicked this off with a meeting with Ms. Ward, a fourth grade teacher at Oak Knoll, and we've carried that tradition forward. She, her students wrote a bunch of letters to the EQC and to the city council, and so we've had follow-up meetings with her. We're going to discuss it during the next EQC. So the goal is carrying that forward as a regular way to engage students in the work of the commission. So thank you, Councilmember Dorr. We've taken that ball and we're running with it. So there's a few other ideas in here that we're going to incorporate in the work plan. So apologies for that feeling very rushed, but I wanted to just say, it's been a great year. I think it's been a really productive team. I'm super appreciative to be able to relay this information to everybody. And if you have any questions, we're looking for your guidance on two main things. How do you feel about the progress on the city priorities? Do you have any feedback on that? And then also, are you hearing other things that we should consider for the climate work? So, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for the presentation. And are there any questions or comments from council members before I go to public comment?
Sure.
Okay. City Clerk Heron, can you take public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our presentation item I two, Annual Environmental Quality Commission Report Out, participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Currently seeing two virtual hands. So I will call for the final call for public comment on our presentation item I two. Okay, so we have four speakers. I will begin with Adina Levin and then Jenny Michelle.
Hello. Good evening, city council members. Adina Levin, Menlo Park President. And as a former member of the EQC, it's really great to hear the good work that the EQC is currently doing in order to advance what has been a city council priority in the priority setting in recent years. And glad to see the real proactive work on these priorities, including on things where the city, you know, really very much is the lead actor, for example, with our tree canopy and things that we do with things like city buildings, as well as working on things that in order to advance, the city really needs to be a key player on the resilience issues and, and transportation issues for that matter. And, but that also requires working closely with, with other cities and regional partners in order to be able to pursue the strategies and seek the funding that will be required in order to move forward those important priorities. And then interestingly, and glad to see the prioritization on the vehicle miles traveled reduction, which is something that, you know, you, you look at it kind of from a high level and think, well, what does the city have to do with this? And actually, with the city being really the lead player in our streets and roads and how comfortable it is to walk and bike and with our housing and, and land use local policy, the ability that we provide and enable for many people to make convenient choices that don't involve driving a lot. So just in summary, glad to see all of the progress in, you know, protecting our community resilience in the short and long term and in all the other aspects of moving the climate forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. It looks like two of the four hands have gone down, so our final speaker will be Jenny Michelle.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, honorable staff, neighbors, members of the public, I'm Jenny Michelle, longtime D three resident, personal comment. Firstly, thank you to the commission, all the various neighbors and stakeholders who have put in the work to get us to this point. You've consistently inspired me. Further, you have helped me navigate bullying from folks who have not connected or don't understand their interests are indeed represented in these priorities. Excuse me. Environmental quality and environmental justice benefit all, especially in this sixth age of mass extinction driven by human activity. Looking in the mirror and seeing how ugly we are is hard and causes some healthy grief. To the subject matter, regarding the expansion of the urban canopy or increasing the percentage of tree coverage in District One, I have some concerns on the execution. Several important competing interests intersect. So the question is, can there be a solution where we all win, or does another historically marginalized group have to suffer? The design of the streets are constrained with limited ability to add bike infrastructure. Overcrowding not felt in other districts compounds this problem. Likewise, the sidewalks are narrow and need to remain intact for wheelchair or mobility impaired accessibility. So where do we place the trees? Question mark. Although slightly complicated, could we not propose to plant trees on privately owned parcels like a reverse memo of understanding that is tied to the title, like an easement? The city could say to the owner who has the land feasibility to support the tree, we would, as the city, we would own and maintain the tree on your parcel, but you would enjoy the improvement or investment value of the tree. It's health-saving shade and clean air, right? The sidewalks would be undisturbed outside of root, root growth, distorting the grade over time. And then additionally, overhead power lines would not be impacted, and the tree could grow to its full potential. That was just my idea. Thank you for consideration and your work again.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comments. And at this time, I'll turn it to Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Schmidt, the presentation, and all the fantastic work that the EQC has done, especially the nod towards involving younger folks in the conversation and just doing really deep community listening across our community and especially thinking about comments around how to increase resilience today to address issues that our community is facing, especially in Bellhaven. I appreciate the attention and the thoughtfulness that you bring and the team brings every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. Vice Mayor Combs, did you have any feedback for the presentation?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash? Mr. Schmidt, just going to your questions, how do I feel about the progress on the city's priorities? Well, clearly, folks are extremely happy with the work the EQC has done. For me, I just, I appreciate all the due diligence, working towards best practices. And then also really, I mean, I think you're the most active commission that we have, but most importantly, I think we, there aren't any openings. So that's one of the, the top commissions that folks are asking to participate in, and I believe it's because of what the leadership has been doing in the past and is doing now. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. So my only feedback is, thank you.
Couldn't have done it without city council support as well, so thank you in return.
Thank you. Moving to our next agenda item, which is item J, our Consent Calendar. Under the Consent Calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Heron, can you please provide an update on item J three?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So city staff is requesting that item J three, which is repeal and place city council procedures or policies and procedures, and approve updates to the city council. or policies and procedures and approve updates to the city council procedures. Manuible be pulled from this agenda and added to August thirteenth. There seem to have been maybe some difficulties with loading attachments and or the staff report. And just want to get that on an agenda where it can be fully visible.
Thank you, Ms. Heron.
Thank you.
City Clerk Heron, can you take public comment at this time on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on consent calendar items, J one, except the city council meeting minutes. J two, the adoption of a wireless facilities ordinance. J four, an adoption of a resolution updating the recreation scholarship policy. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, J one, J two, and J four. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, since we're pulling item J three and looking at the remaining items, I would like to actually separate J two out so that I can vote on it separately. If that's okay with council members. So at this time, I'll take a motion to approve the remaining consent calendar items.
I second. I, I, I so woo, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Dorr and a second by city council member Nash to approve the consent calendar, the exception of items J two and J three. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with city council member Willison absent.
Thank you. And at this time, I will make the motion. Councilmember Nash? Okay, I'll make the motion for item J two.
I will second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Taylor and a second by city council member Nash to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance adding chapter thirteen point three two, Wireless Facilities in the Public Right of Way to Title thirteen, Streets, Sidewalks, and Utilities of the Municipal Code. Adopt uncodified ordinance adopting certain fees relating to the wireless facilities, permit, and site license fee. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
And the motion passes with Mayor Taylor dissenting and city council member Willison absent.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is item K, public hearing.
Pardon the interruption, Mayor Taylor, can we do item? J two is done, never mind. Please continue. Apologies.
Our next item is our public hearing. Public hearings are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The public hearing is K one, adopt resolutions. One, denying and appeal and upholding the planning commission's approval of a use permit, architectural control permit, and below market rate housing agreement for an eight unit residential building on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R three apartment zoning district at one two two zero Hoover Street. And two, approving the tentative map to subdivide the property into eight condominium units and one common area parcel. Here to introduce this item is our senior planner, Chris Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and council members. Chris Turner is senior planner. I'm joined with Kyle Parada, Assistant Community Development Director. Tonight, we will be discussing the appeal of the planning commission's decision to approve the use permit architectural control and BMR agreements at twelve twenty Hoover and the recommended approval of the tentative subdivision map. So tonight, we will be taking two actions. I've laid out a recommended format for tonight's meeting as the formal appeal procedure. First, I will give a brief introduction of the project, followed by a presentation by the applicant, followed by a presentation and rebuttal period from the appellant, and then rebuttal by the applicant if necessary. We can then take clarifying questions from the city council, move to public comment, and then bring it back to the dais for deliberation and a vote on the appeal and then subsequent action on the tentative subdivision map. So the project is located near the corner of Hoover Street and Oak Grove Avenue. The project is directly adjacent to the specific plan area, but it's located in the R three apartment district around downtown. We sometimes refer to this as the R three infill overlay, which is developed generally to promote additional housing in and around the downtown area at the same time that the specific plan was adopted in 2012. Originally, the infill overlay only applied to lots that were 10,000 square feet or more, but it now applies to all properties in the R three infill district per the recent amendments to the R three zoning district to implement the housing element update. So in the R three infill district, there is a minimum required density, but it also allows for a higher maximum density than other R three properties that are not located around the downtown area. The proposed project would be an eight unit residential development with seven market rate units and one below market rate BMR unit. The applicant has also submitted a tentative subdivision map to subdivide the property into condominium units that could be sold separately. The project was submitted under SB three thirty, which limits review of housing projects to objective design standards in place of the time that a preliminary application was deemed complete. And it also was submitted under state density bonus law, which allows additional density in return for BMR units. In this case, increasing the the density from seven units to eight units. And under state density bonus law, you're allowed, the applicant is allowed waivers from objective development standards. And in this case, the applicant has requested waivers from the maximum height, maximum floor area ratio, and maximum paving for driveways and parking. Planning Commission approved the use permit architectural control and BMR agreement at the April fifteenth, 2024 hearing. And they also recommended approval of the tentative subdivision map. One keynote, since there is a subdivision map, the applicants are intending to initially rent the units. The BMR agreement was set up for this initial rental period, and it provides some protections for existing renters and a process for the transition from rental units to for sale units. So then the city, after planning commission's action, received a, an appeal of the project on April twenty sixth. The full appeal letter is in the staff report. But to summarize the overarching claims in the in the letter, the applicant suggests, or the appellant suggests that the the planning commission failed to analyze significant health, safety, and architectural concerns. That the planning commission wrongly determined that it could not deny a project. And then that a new public hearing was required to review the conditions of approval the planning commission placed on the project. And again, staff's full responses to the appellant's concerns is included in the staff report. But to summarize, the the planning commission properly analyzed the health and safety concerns, including potential impacts to air quality, traffic, construction methods, water quality, and noise. Under SB three thirty, housing projects are analyzed against objective design standards. Cannot be denied for subjective reasons. Further, state density bonus law allows for waivers from the zoning standards and which are unlimited. And they may not be used as a reason to find that the project is out of compliance with those objective standards. And finally, the the planning commission took final action at the April fifteenth meeting by conditionally approving the project, which is within their authority. And there's no requirement to have a subsequent hearing to finalize those conditions. So with that, the the recommendation for tonight is to adopt a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's approval of the use permit, architectural control, and BMR agreement. And also to adopt a resolution approving the tentative subdivision map. The actions are subject to conditions of approval, which are included as attachments to each respective resolution. So with that, the mayor would like to proceed with the recommended format. The applicant would now have a brief presentation, followed by the appellant, and then a brief rebuttal if if necessary.
Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, and the rest of the city council members. My name is Brian Shepherd. I am one of the owners of the project. I'm going to leave the architectural drawings for our architect. He'll come up here in a second. But I just wanted to give a little brief background about how we designed this project and why, and how it relates to the waivers that we're looking for. And thank you very much for Chris and the city staff for introducing the project for us and and working with us all along the way to to get to this point. I've been a Menlo Park resident for five years. I live here with my family and I have relatives very close by, which is one of the reasons why we love this this city and the neighborhood so much. And I just want to start by saying, I completely understand where the appeal came from and why this project seems concerning to the to the neighbors. You know, we're adding significantly more units than are currently on the the property today. So we're adding six more units. It is going to be higher than the other buildings around it, which I I recognize is a big change, especially for that street. I walk by that street quite often, so I I know the neighborhood, the look and feel. But I still think that this is a very exciting project to have and a a building that will help the city going forward to achieve its housing goals and the the type of look and feel we want in our downtown. And with that said, we really focused on two areas when we were thinking about this project. We wanted more housing. I think that's obvious. California needs more housing, and especially Menlo Park needs more housing. And what better place to have housing is in downtown Menlo Park. It's walkable. You can walk to the shops and restaurants. You can walk to my favorite Trader Joe's, and you can get to Caltrain. I think that's one of the most important pieces here is it offers more residents an opportunity to walk and engage with our downtown. And secondly, we wanted a variety of housing options. So we wanted to offer one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom units. And this was specifically from my own personal experience because I moved to Menlo Park and lived in a two bedroom. And then my family grew. And I can't tell you how excited I was to find a three bedroom that fit us in the same neighborhood. And having that extra space with a growing family was something that I wanted to make sure that I had in our in our project as well because it is something that made such a difference in my life. And three bedroom units can be can be a little scarce at that in that space and and location. So it's something that I I wanted to add. And with that, when you have that many units and and the diversity of of unit type that we were looking for, it's going to cause us to go a little bit higher than than the zoning and cover a little more floor area and paving, which is why we need the waivers. This is not something we took lightly. We considered it. We considered many other options, but we felt this was the best for both the neighborhood and and our project as a whole and what we were looking to provide the city. So thank you for that time. We've got, our architect Anthony will come up and kind of walk you through the specifics, but I wanted you to have the background first, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. And my name is Anthony Ho, representing LPMD Architects, the designer for the project. I'll just briefly talk about the three waivers that our planner, Mr. Chris Turner, had briefly touched upon. What is in front of you, the first slide, is about height. The regular allowable height is forty feet. And we are asking for another eleven feet to make it fifty one, not only to accommodate the upper floor of the the two units below that, but also is to have enough parapet wall to hide the official seeing the rooftop equipment. So that fifty one feet total is not just the floor, but also include the screening of rooftop equipment. The next slide, please. This one is about the floor area. We are allowed to have point seven F A R. And we are applying for point, almost point eight, point seven seven, which is slightly higher, is to accommodate, as you can see on the diagram. If we don't have the extra floor area, we'll be losing one of the unit on the left and a portion of the unit on the right. Next slide, please. The third and the last ask is a exception to the paving. Right now, the allowable is thirty five percent, and we are looking for forty five percent. The reason is that, as you can see, thirty five percent paving is bringing up, bringing it up to the arrow point right there. But beyond the arrow, we still need to get access to that space for both the fire truck and for parking purpose. And we don't want to lose parking either because we don't want parking to spill over to the street and affect our neighbors. And of course, the fire truck access is a safety requirement. So that concludes the three points that I want to make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have the appellant's presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Margaret Neff. I'm one of the owners of one, two, three, four Hoover Street, which is just to the left of the west of the proposed development. And I'm a president of our homeowners association for our three units, the one, two, three, four, six, and eight, which go from front to back just to the west of the proposed development. And I'm also original owner from when our three units were built in 2013. So I can actually appreciate the impact of building in tight spaces. Our neighbors on either side of the units when ours were built also had similar concerns about a larger building process that was going up. But I'd say the difference that we're feeling is that their input felt more heard and more acted on. Whereas in our situation, we're feeling that our concerns and input are sort of getting washed away in waivers. So I wanted to highlight a few issues that we brought about in the appeal and then just that I think warrant highlighting a little further. So first of all, I mean, we're not naive to the fact that building was going to happen at twelve twenty. I was a friend with the original owner who had bought there in the fifties, I believe, and had been in her house, and it was older and not developed. And we knew that a larger property would be coming there. So this isn't about pro or anti housing. This is really just about recognizing that we knew we'd have new neighbors. We were looking forward to. recognizing that we knew we'd have new neighbors. We were looking forward to supporting neighbors as we were welcomed ten years ago. But we also and we also knew there'd be every effort really to maximize the space. We know the city needs housing, and we knew it was an understandable goal for the developer. But I'd say what we didn't anticipate and didn't feel anyone would really be surprised or upset about is that basically it feels like they're gonna plan to sort of dock a cruise ship next to our homes. And I say that in jest, but I think we've all seen these pictures. These came from the developer, and it really feels out of context with everything else in Hoover. Brian, I think you mentioned that, you know, you kind of realized that we would be sort of surprised and concerned about the size. I think the the thing that really stands out to us is that there's really nothing else like this on Hoover Street. Even the fire station that's across the street, which we're delighted to have, is not this big. The downtown specific plan really describes building heights, right, of two to three stories, except for three to four stories on El Camino. But we're on Hoover Street. So why, you know, is this now seeming to be a part of what our community should look like? This downtown plan also really set standards that were set with great intention and forethought. And approving these waivers really without perhaps as thorough consideration for alternatives sort of throws out the work that was done when those standards were set. So kind of on a sort of similar vein, we're also very aware and have learned a lot more than we probably ever expected we would about Housing Crisis Act and the state bonus density laws and a variety of the other things that we know are impactful on both the commission, the planning commission and the council's decision to approve or deny any of these processes. So we know this is a complex scenario. But what we I think are concerned about is just sort of how this fits with the impact on the neighborhood as a whole. And sort of solutions that we saw that were mitigatable. So just as a couple of examples, and in response to some of the earlier pictures that we'd seen, for instance, the that fourth floor that was described, and I think on one of the screens actually described as losing two units. They lose rooms. I totally get that, and I appreciate the value of of a three bedroom. But is that worth having this fifty-foot plus building next to us and having to pursue that waiver? Was that something that could have or could be further explored? There's also the concern about parking. Certainly, parking's a wonderful thing for people to have, but actually being within a half mile of the train station, we sort of all learned it was actually not a requirement, but was used to justify that fourteen-foot overhang over the parking, which then raised the overall total height. So I guess for us and part of our appeal process was really just kind of questioning where these things actually got brought up and focused and looked at as alternatives to needing a couple of these waivers from the get-go. And I think really what we started questioning was this balance between seating sort of responsibility, seating to the density plan and laws in contrast to really the commission and the council's responsibility to the city's residents. We sort of feel like we we are, is there responsibility to us as all as well? So we live here, too. The state law doesn't turn any of you or our commissioners into rubber stamps, right? We're still very respectful and thankful for the people that are actually critically assessing proposals for their relevance and appropriateness and to look out for us, its residents. And I think what one thing, one of the reasons that really the we put forth the appeal was the feeling certainly in the planning commission that it had already been sort of predetermined. And some of this may come from the laws that everyone knew that we were gonna need to address. But as an example, one of the statements that one of the commissioners had was essentially highlighting that this development addresses all the key sort of appropriate priorities that the city has. And yet nowhere in that list was the priorities of the residents and the feel for the community. So I guess my question as well, as part of this appeal, but kind of comes out of it, is also saying sort of what do the commissioners and the council members share in terms of responsibility for the residents? Who are the taxpayers, the voters, and more importantly, really, the people who build the community that we know and love as downtown Menlo? Similarly, when we look at the general plan that has zoning laws and guidance, they're really there for a reason. There was a lot of work obviously put into this for the city. And it's really up to all of you and our our planning commission to really interpret those. One of them, the goal, I think, is LU two dash two is about maintaining and enhancing the character and variety and stability of the Menlo Park residential neighborhood. Two point one really talks about neighborhood compatibility. And so I questioned where was that factored in? And where would that line be drawn? Is it at four stories? Would it be ten? Would you draw the line at four hundred feet? Where where is that line? And I realize that the criteria are fairly rigid, but there is still decision making and assessment because clearly some of these would be out of bounds. But why is this larger four-story building also considered appropriate? Because I will say that some, while being a standard lot, it's not by a little, it's by quite a lot. So fifty-four foot versus what I believe the standard is, is eighty. One of the planning commissioners commented, kind of looks like a boat, not very compatible with the neighborhood, but I like it. And, you know, everyone has their own tastes, I'm sure. But on the other hand, is it how it fits with the neighborhood, personal preferences? How is it that we can sort of basically incorporate the community feel, even though we actually recognize that we also need to evaluate the the project for these sort of more rigid criteria? The Housing Accountability Act, it certainly describes areas for your consideration when it comes to health and safety concerns. There were comments that were made about the traffic, noise, air pollution, water quality that the city provided in response. But really, nothing about light reduction and airflow was distinctly addressed. The city's variance processes talk about plans that should not damage the health and safety or impair adequate light and air to adjacent properties. I would contest that this fifty-foot building a mere seventeen feet from our fence does just that. It casts shade on our units, which are to the west of the property. From this overhyped building, it's gonna limit light and limit our access to solar energy options as we should choose to proceed with them in the future. As one of the planning commissioners who had descended said, it's the right idea, but on the wrong lot. There have been similar words that have been used for sort of other recent city projects, something along the lines of it's a scale not appropriate to the location. I am, though, in the final analysis, confident that you will, without passion or fear and with the evidence that you've had, come to the fair decision that honors your responsibility to all the citizens of Menlo Park. And finally, taking inspiration from an old classic, I ask you to quite simply do your duty. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now open for any clarifying questions from the from the council. Sorry. For that, the applicant has a chance to rebut the appellant's claims if they would like to to say anything at this time. Okay. Now I welcome any clarifying questions.
Thank you for both presentations. And at this time, are there any clarifying questions from city council members? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I would like to ask our city attorney if, or perhaps planning staff, if someone can explain a little bit more, how much discretion does the city have on this project?
Happy to start, and then I'll turn it to planning staff if they want to add. As Mr. Turner and the applicant both explained, the development of this project is made possible through the use of state density bonus law waivers. The applicant is waiving or reducing three development standards that would otherwise apply but for state density bonus law. And they're entitled to state density bonus law because of the provision of the affordable below-market rate housing unit. State density bonus law is very clear that a development that's entitled to proceed under state density bonus law is afforded unlimited waivers, and waivers are reductions or waivers of development standards that would otherwise apply to the project. The state density bonus law is very clear. The legisla, the the state law itself says that the city is not required to grant a waiver if the waiver would result in specific adverse impacts as defined in the Housing Accountability Act. I'll read that in a second. Upon health, safety or physical environment, and for which there is no feasible method to satisfactorily satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impacts. And the housing, I'm sorry, what? What's that? Yes. Did you guys hear that? Do you want me to repeat it? Okay. The Housing Accountability Act defines, which the state density bonus law refers to, define specific adverse impact as a significant quantifiable, direct and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. The H A goes on to say, is the intent of the legislature that the conditions that would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health and safety arise infrequently? The California Court of Appeals has also interpreted state density bonus law and waivers in a case that came out in twenty twenty-two. It's the Bankers' Hill versus San Diego case. And specifically said that where that where a development applicant is entitled to waivers, the waivers must be granted even if the project could be redesigned in such a way to avoid the need for waivers, meaning you get the waivers for your project as designed. So all of this taken together prompted city staff and my office to recommend that the waivers be granted. We did not find that there was a preponderance of the evidence, which is the standard that we utilize here for determining whether or not a waiver should be granted. We did not find that there had that that there was a showing of a preponderance of the evidence that there were specific adverse impacts from the height, paving and FAR waivers. And the fact that the project could be redesigned so as to not need those waivers is of no significance after the Bankers' Hill decision. And then lastly, the fact that the the fact that there are inconsistencies with development standards due to waivers, that in and of itself is not a significant adverse impact. And both the legislature and the courts have been very clear about that.
Thank you. So that's especially related to the state density bonus law and waivers. This project is also subject to SB three thirty. Could you explain what that means for this project?
Sure, yeah. So SB three thirty, the Housing Crisis Act, modified the Housing Accountability Act in certain ways to, including limiting the city to it to denying housing development projects. This is a housing development project where the housing development project complies with objective development standards. The Housing Accountability Act specifically says that noncompliance due to waivers, concessions or incentives under state density bonus law is not a basis to deny a project. Despite the fact that those objective development standards are obviously not complied with, where waivers allow the development to wave out of those standards. So staff's analysis of this project is but for the FAR paving and height, which are the subject of the three waivers, that the project otherwise complies with all objective, applicable objective development standards. If I am misstating anything, I'll let planning staff jump in on that.
I don't have anything to add to that.
Other clarification, I know that the planning commission provided some conditions. There were the four mentioned of bicycle parking, obscured glass, architectural features in the front and alternative pavement materials. Are those all given this state law and the density bonus law? Does that mean that those are just suggestions for, or are those actual conditions or suggested conditions? I'd love clarification on what what that conditional approval means.
Yeah, so those conditions would apply to the project. They didn't have the effect of reducing the proposed density or denying the project. So the applicant would be required to provide the bike parking, look at alternate paving methods, provide obscure glass in the in the windows as defined in the in the specific condition. And then staff will work with the applicant about the architectural feature and whether or not that can be implemented in the project.
Are there any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Just wanted to follow up on the question that councilmember Nash asked our city attorney as far as how much discretion does the city council have? Was that explained to the appellant? Either by staff or by our our city attorney, just so that they understood the position of the city council?
Yeah, I I I'll let planning staff jump in as to the planning commission hearing, but the record does reflect what I just articulated.
Yeah, the the city's discretion on the project was discussed at the planning commission meeting.
And even as far as the appellant, even with an appeal, the the city, it doesn't sound like this, the city council, we could all vote no. But since it's an SB three thirty project, it means that we have to give approval?
So assuming you agree with me, state law has greatly curtailed the city's discretion here. If the council were to deny the project, the applicant would have a reasonable basis to suggest that their denial was inconsistent with the H A and state density bonus law, and we would work with the applicant on that. But like I said, state law has greatly curtailed the council's decision here. And I think, as the appellant said, I'm forgetting the eloquent wording, but it was something like the council isn't a rubber stamp. But state law has sort of changed that with respect to housing development projects, particularly in the state density bonus context. So I I'm not sure that I I totally agree with that statement.
Thank you. At this time.
Really quick question. What statement doesn't the city attorney agree with? I just wanted, and who made that statement that they don't agree with, so I can have complete context and framing?
I I think the statement was something, and and I shouldn't put words in the appellant's mouth, I'm sorry, but I think it was something along the lines of you know, the the city council doesn't have to rubber stamp the application. And and I think that that's correct in so much as the city council and the city still has a great deal of discretion to condition the project, but much less discretion to deny the project under the H A and the state density bonus law.
And can you come to the podium, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret Neff, again. There'd been a question just like how much we as the, or I as the appellant and us in the appeal had actually been aware of like what could or couldn't happen. And I would say I do appreciate Chris's and and all the communication back and forth. It has been certainly very helpful. And I would say I do appreciate Chris's and, and all the communication back and forth. It has been certainly very helpful, and we've gotten a, a lot more, uh, wise and, uh, aware of the laws, but I would say that the piece and the only reason to, to continue to be discussing this is that we certainly, um, saw a component of this where there is a chunk of this that is still health and safety, and that was an area that at least for most of our interpretation, there was some latitude for the council to be able to relook at this, um, and not have to just rubber stamp of some word, or basically not have any authority to critically be able to evaluate things, because I think, you know, our take on this too is that we value having members on a council that can actually evaluate, um, sort of the pros and the cons and what's going on, and that that would be actually part of this process and not just having to go down sort of a, a conveyor belt. Um, otherwise, why have any of this process, you know, really, if there's nothing to be discussed?
Thank you. If there aren't any other clarifying questions, Vice Mayor Combs, did you have a question? Um, Ms. Herron, can you please take public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item K one, adopt resolutions denying an appeal and upholding the planning commission's approval of a use permit, architectural control permit, and below market rate housing agreement for an eight unit residential building on a substandard lot with regard to the minimum lot width in the R three zoning district at twelve twenty Hoover Street, and approving the tentative map to subdivide the property into eight condominium units and one common area parcel. Now's the time to complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landlanyary cell phone, please press star nine now. Give me one moment while I compile all of the current speakers. Yes, I currently have a total of eleven speakers. So this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item K one. So if you are looking to speak, please get your cards into me or raise that hand feature or pressing star nine if you're calling in. All right, um, Mayor Taylor, we have a total of twelve speakers that I can see.
Um, thank you, Ms. Herron. At this time, we'll do two minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will be starting with Kimberly L., followed by Cheryl G.
Thank you, members of the council, and thank you, members of the planning commission, and thank you, um, other members of the staff. I respectfully submit that you do have discretion. And I believe that while the staff attorney has described the nature of these laws, it's very important to remember, council members, that there is discretion here under health, safety, and the physical environment. It indeed is not just a powerless situation that you find yourselves in. And anyone who looks at this proposed development can see it is completely out of character with the neighborhood. I have owned a home at one, two, five, four Hoover, just down the street since two, two thousand and eight. I have raised my three children there since that time, and I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. We have a three-bedroom, small home. There are plenty of three bedrooms on that street. I happen to know I raised my three children there. So there is no need for additional three bedrooms. There's plenty around. And as you can also see, that this is taking the standards of El Camino Real and cascading it over into our, our neighborhood. I can tell you, because I walk the street and live there, that there is not enough house, not enough parking now on the street. There's, the guests cannot park. It's very, very crowded and condensed. And cars use that street Hoover as a cut through. They come through fast. There are many children and elderly people that live on Hoover Street. And I can't even imagine having this cruise ship there with not enough parking, probably young children living in there, cars swinging by. This is a hazard and a true danger, a safety danger to, to the children and the residents of the current neighborhood. So I respectfully request that this council exercise the discretion that it does have and deny the application. Ask the applicant to make revisions that bring it more in sync with the neighborhood. As we've said in our appeal, we're not against development. We're not against this development. It just needs to be tapered down to be more reasonable. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Cheryl G., followed by Michael G.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Judas Sessi. I own a home at one, two, three, six Hoover Street. The back of our home faces the middle of the proposed twelve-car garage, eight-unit condo building. Three years ago, when we started looking to buy a house in California, our realtor assured us that Menlo Park had good zoning codes and a good government that would reinforce those codes. Was he wrong? Because I see a city government not wanting to protect its residents and neighborhood, but giving in to a developer trying to exploit the state laws for profit. Certainly, state laws still provides ways to protect neighborhoods like ours. It is time for you, as our representatives, to rein in that law by refusing to grant the proposed parking garage condo building based on health and safety considerations. I have health and safety considerations. The amount of light, especially in the winter time, that the large building will interrupt for coming into my house. But I also have health concerns about the noise, the congestion, and the exhaust from a twelve-car garage in my backyard. Thank you for your time, and please take our considerations of our neighborhood safety and well-being seriously.
Next speaker is Michael G., followed by John Wu.
Good evening. I'm Michael Judas Sessi, one, two, three, six Hoover Street. And it's a hard act to follow when you follow Cheryl. Building a twelve, twelve-car garage on a fifty-foot lot is just not sustainable. It's not sustainable for people. It's not sustainable for the community. We hope you dismiss the foregone conclusions of resolution K one and a dismissive approach of the staff and the lawyers who don't seem to want to find a way for you to say no. They tell you the risks of saying no rather than the ability to say no. We think you can and should look at the substantial weight of the facts. Facts about height, facts about cars, facts about people, facts about paving, facts about density, facts that are objective, and facts that your ordinances, your plans, your policies would prohibit. You can and should uphold the appeal. So reject that language from the staff. Uphold the appeal. Reverse the planning this commission's decision, which was only a four to two. Deny the substandard lot being used for parking garages that are fourteen feet high, topped by three stories of condominiums. Deny the tentative map. Don't allow a common ownership of a parking lot and paving. Don't allow a division of three top stories of a building into eight condominiums. You have health and safety basis to do so. We ask that you use the power the statute gives you. Use the facts that are before you tonight and use your common sense. It's ironic, this house, this plan, this project is on Hoover Street. Who else but Herbert Hoover was one of the leaders of saying local zoning laws should protect residents and communities? Please protect us.
Our next speaker will be John Wu, followed by Seppi Jean.
Hi, I'm John Wu, seven twenty-one Elizabeth Lane, which is, um, off Hoover. And, um, I was a little bit surprised, uh, tonight in hearing the acquiescence of the town to state law. One thing that was not mentioned was fighting or banning to, uh, banding together with other towns to fight these edicts from the state. I mean, the U S government is set up intentionally with series, a series of checks and balances. And I think that the city needs to be a check against the state in this case. I know, and I don't understand why the city seems to want to roll over to the state. I, I mean, if the, if the state passed a law that said water has to boil at fifty degrees centigrade because it's good for the environment, would we not contest it? And so what we have here is we have an application for waivers for things that the developer admits is where, is outside, well outside normal use. So I'm wondering, you know, it, it seems that the council and the planning commission are reticent about or, or hesitant to reject the waiver because they don't want to have to deal with the state. But I think, you know, local government is really important because it's the truest reflection of what people want. And what the people in this town want is reflected in the zoning laws, and they've happened over a period of time. And they're, uh, they're the best reflection we have of how the people in this town want to see development in this town. Okay? And so what I'm wondering is, are you guys going to back the people of this town, the people that give you your power? Or are you going to back the state? And, you know, I know it's a difficult thing. It's, it's expensive to fight people in court, but I think the issue should come up in town because there are a lot of push downs by the state which are questionable. And, you know, we're seeing what's going on on Willow Road. There's that. There are all these edicts on whether or not you have to switch to electricity. You can have a gas stove. There are all sorts of things like this. And it'll be nice to see a city council that takes these types of issues seriously and perhaps band together with other towns to fight these, these edicts. And I'm hoping that you do, and I hope you will fight for us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Seppi Ghaffari, followed by Josh Weiner.
Hi there. I'm the owner of thirteen thirty-two Hoover Street. I have two small children. Um, we've watched Hoover Street change in the last couple of years, and I do want to comment on the look, look and feel of Hoover Street. We are essentially the backyard of El Camino. I live right next to an eleven-unit condominium, condominium complex with over ten parking, underground parking spots. Um, so to comment on this cruise ship, I live right next to one, um, that was built. So I am in support of this, um, this new development, uh, because it's adding more units to Hoover Street, and Hoover Street is not a quiet residential street. It is, um, it is busy. We have a lot of noise from El Camino, um, but it's a lot of mixed-use hous- housing. Um, and so it's what we've gotten used to, and it's, like I mentioned, nothing out of, out of the ordinary. Um, I'm able to look outside of my house and see the high-rise of Spring Line that was built across the street of El Camino, um, and all the restaurants and the different development and the different feel that Hoover Street has become. And it has really become more of a city-type feel. Um, like I said, it's not quiet. It is crowded, unfortunately, but that's the street that, um, it, that it is becoming. And, um, in terms of, like I said, right next to me at thirteen twenty-six, it's a similar type, um, condo. Thank you.
Next speaker is Josh Weiner, followed by Mallory Lassen.
Hello, I'm Josh Weiner. Uh, I live on thirteen thirty-two Hoover Street, just down the street from the project. I'm in support of it. Uh, I think the appeal should be denied, and the city should honor state law. Uh, I think state laws are, are meant to be followed, and, uh, I, I'm enjoying a lot of the comments. It kills me that there's only two minutes, so I'm just going to see if my contribution, I'm, I'm going to tackle some really specific items I heard. I heard concern about exhaust from cars, but a little earlier, I heard some really cool things, uh, from the E, E Q C commission that's, uh, working on electric, electrification and charging electric cars. I don't think you need to worry too much about exhaust in the near future because with electric vehicles, that'll, uh, come way down. Also, uh, I'm hearing a lot about height of the cruise ship, and based on what I've seen in the drawings and the plans, this looks like a very beautiful structure building. I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's a good characterization to call it a cruise ship. I've been on a cruise ship. What I like about these buildings is they have a lot of deck space on the very top. It's not like a wall. There's going to be a lot of openness on the very top of the building. I also, uh, I also heard something about loss of solar. I happen to be a, a solar expert. I own and manage an engineering services companies and have done uh, work in this, in solar and batteries and microgrids for the last twenty years. I'd be happy to help anybody after this meeting, or I'll give you my phone number. We could talk about ways you could go solar with or without a large or small building right next to you. There's other factors besides sunlight that actually factor into those sorts of things. And, and I, and I have two kids, and we go up and down Hoover all the time. It is a busy street. It's a beautiful street. I love it. It is right next to El Camino, and there is uh, a lot of spill, we don't live in silos. The air crosses from El Camino to Hoover. People cross from El Camino to Hoover. I'm going to work now. I cross the street to go to uh, Spring Line because that's where I'm, so, uh, I'm not too worried about us sharing together. Thanks.
Our next speaker will be Mallory Lassen, followed by Ross Silverstein.
Hello, my name's Mallory. I'm a Menlo Park resident. Um, I came here tonight because I just wanted to speak to how important I feel it is to allow projects like this to exist because I think it's really critical to a strong and vibrant community to allow people with diverse backgrounds and especially diverse employment to live in this community. I don't think we want to live in a place where it's mostly just tech workers and Stanford professors. Um, so I'm really encouraged by the fact that we are exploring ways to have larger housing units, and as the developers mentioned, in areas that are really natural to it, near El Camino and near downtown. Um, thank you also for having these conversations and allowing us to come up. Um, I'm excited to see more projects like this.
Our next speaker will be Ross Silverstein, followed by a call-in user. Ross, you should be able to unmute your mic.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Um, I am here to advocate to, uh, for denying the appeal and to, uh, approve the original project. Um, while the character of this project in relation to the neighborhood is seemingly not up for review because of the California state, state laws, I do want to opine a little bit um, on those points. So it's been said that this project is the right project in the wrong place. I wholeheartedly believe that this is the exact place for a development like this. It is in our downtown-specific plan zoning, which is explicitly says that its goal is to increase density. It's walking distance to downtown and to Caltrain. And the only reason it seems out of character to nearby homes is because And the only reason it seems out of character to nearby homes is because we have so much opposition to even simple projects like this. And if this appeal is approved, then the next project that comes to city council will continue to appear to be out of place and so on. And this will continue forever because we'll just continue to maintain the status quo of only having single-family housing right next to our downtown. I also believe it would be irresponsible to reject a project on the grounds of protesting California laws that would just unnecessarily cost the city more money and time. There are no reasonable arguments to find that there's a significant health concern. And the traffic concerns that people have around more density within the neighborhood only furthers the argument that we need to enable more people to live within walking distance and biking distance to their daily activities instead of the sprawl that we've enabled to date that requires driving everywhere. And if we continue projects like this and continue to slowly and over time increase density around downtown, then hopefully we can alleviate some of those traffic concerns in the first place. Thank you.
Our next speaker is a call-in user, followed by Adina Levin. And for our call-in, asking you to unmute and if you could state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Galaxy. As a neighbor of this project, I do welcome new neighbors in general, and I have some concerns about this proposed project in particular. First, I have some health and safety concerns about the impact of this proposed project on traffic and on safety. Hoover Street, there's often a line of cars at either end of Hoover Street waiting to turn onto Oak Grove or Valparaiso. This morning, the line of cars waiting to turn onto Oak Grove was so long that it extended to the start of the 1220 Southernmost driveway and right across from the side driveway for the fire station. Increasing the number of units at 1220 beyond the amount that would normally be allowed is likely to generate an increase in vehicle trips. That increase in vehicle trips is likely to further affect the health and safety of current residents of all drivers passing through by increasing stress and potential risk. Additionally, I have concerns about the impact of the proposed project on street parking. The proposed project will include eight units and 12 parking spots for residents. And while it was originally going to include one visitor parking spot, it's my understanding that at the April 15th Planning Commission meetings, the developer agreed to replace that parking spot with bicycle parking during a discussion that members of the public were not allowed to comment on. It is likely that at least some of the residents will need a permit for on-street parking and is likely that all units will at some point in time have guests, including service professionals and deliveries at least some of the time. Street parking is already quite tight on weekdays during business hours. Sometimes visitors, including service professionals, have to park quite far down the street. Illegal parking near the fire station is more likely when street parking is full. The proposed project is likely to increase the demand for on-street parking, which could lead to concerns for visitors who cannot find a parking spot nearby, which could be a health concern for those who have to walk farther and are not in a shape to do so. Illegal parking could also sometimes jeopardize the health and safety of those in emergency vehicles as well as the community being serviced. While I agree that bicycle parking is important, I wonder if maintaining that guest-vehicle parking spot could still be possible.
Our next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Sen.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council members. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And also, I'm a part of a number of organizations locally and in the area supportive of housing and affordable housing. But since we didn't talk about this project, I'm speaking for myself here. You know, the city has just gone through the most recent housing element process, really looking at the major need to have more housing for people of all income levels, addressing our city and region and state's deep housing shortage. In the previous housing element, there was a pretty catastrophic problem in terms of zoning for the vast majority of the housing in D1. And the key goal in the most recent housing element is to allow for more housing in other parts of the city, including and especially near downtown, close to all the services. I do also live near downtown and it's really fantastic to be able to live near services and transit and be able to live with less driving. And, you know, as a resident of the city, I am extremely happy to see projects like this one moving forward. In terms of the context and neighborhood character, yes, the context has changed. Menlo Park has gotten much less affordable. You know, many people have had to leave, young people, old people, people who work here can't live here. And so having more homes in this very convenient and walkable area is really good for neighborhood character and, you know, for people to be able to live with less driving. In terms of the state law, the idea that an eight-home apartment building will be a health and safety problem will not get taken seriously and the city should not, you know, take on the legal challenges of trying to make that argument. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Sen.
Hi, thank you. My name is Shravani Pesiknadi and my family and I are current residents of 1238 Hoover. My husband is Sen, he logged in. And so we live directly west of the proposed structure. So first, I'd like to start with thanking you all for having such a thoughtful discussion on such an important topic and giving us the opportunity to speak. You know, we echo Dr. Neff and everyone else's comments and are really concerned about the health and safety of having such a looming building next to us. You know, our two young children play in the backyard in the sun and this is obviously going to limit that. When we were first looking at houses, we loved this neighborhood feel and really felt like our kids would be safe riding their bikes down the street. I think having this sort of structure with the gate and cars coming in and out, I really don't know how that's going to go. And this structure is really going to be out of place in this neighborhood. It is interesting to hear perspectives of other residents who are in support of this structure. But I think it's important to note that they're actually not in the direct vicinity of the structure and I don't know that they're going to be as directly impacted. In addition, we worry that this sets a dangerous precedent for future developments and really ask the council to use its discretion to amend this project and protect our rights and really keep everyone safe.
Okay, and it doesn't look like there are any further hands raised nor additional cards. So Mayor Taylor, you may close the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. And at this time, I will close the public hearing. And I've had a request from a council member to take a five-minute break.
All right, having our city council back at our in-person and virtual dais. Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene in the meeting.
Thank you. And at this time, the public hearing is closed and we are bringing the discussion back to the dais. I'll start with the city council members to see if there are any questions or direction. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Taylor. I guess since you called on me. Oh, okay. You know, first of all, I want to thank everyone who provided public comment. And, you know, it may not look like it as much, but certainly this is civic life in action. But there's a couple of things I want to just call out in relation to the project and some of the comments. There was a lot of comment as it relates to state law. I do, and the state has some sort of far-off, non-democratic entity. You know, these state laws are a reflection and result of legislative powers that we elect. And so it has every, in fact, mark, since the state is a higher government entity, it has every authority that anything that the city council does. And so I think the extent to which there are folks who have issues with state provisions than the appropriate body and persons to reach out to are the state representatives that we and our fellow residents and citizens elected to those bodies. I think that that's important to point out. Getting to the heart of the issue and specifically this argument and contention that the council should. accept the the appeal and deny the project based on health and safety concerns. There are certain health and safety risks that we all assume by living in an urbanized environment. And by urbanized, I don't mean central business district urbanized. I mean urbanizes and, you know, people living in streets and all of the amenities that I think we would associate with a lifestyle that we are all accustomed with, and that comes with certain health and safety risks. And and to be clear, I don't think that this project represents some extraordinary health and safety risks. And so it would be hard for me to conclude that somehow this project should be denied based on on health and safety concerns or risk or some exposure, which the city attorney has presented, and even I think the residents bringing the pill has presented as as like sort of the main justification for for any any denial from the city council. It's just it just hasn't. If we're talking about exhaust, if we're talking about living next to garages, if we're talking about additional traffic. Again, the these are all risk, health and safety that that we accept living, living in an urbanized environment. So I don't think that like I'm in a position to justify taking a position that would deny this project. But I do want to call out in this time that I've been given to speak, that I really do think it is a poorly designed project. And and it is disappointing that both the developer and architect didn't seek and not based on unnecessarily the height or based on the density, but it just seemed poorly designed. I'm going to be very honest. And it seems like it's based on this this sort of, you know, deemed that construction of apartments that I thought we left behind in the 1970s. And so it's really disappointing that the the developer and architects in this case didn't, you know, use the provisions and additional levers offered to them by the state to to bring up a project that I think could have been, again, as as dense, but a little bit more more thoughtful and forward-looking, which I'll be frank, I don't think that this this is. But but all that being said, I think that, like, like I said, I don't think any threshold related to health and safety has been reached with regards to this project. And so I would be supportive of of denying the appeal and approving the project.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash or Councilmember Dorr, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you. I want to appreciate everyone for coming out and staying out late. I know it's already nine o'clock. So thank you all for being here. And thank you too for all the comments. I hear the the folks who are who are asking to appeal this project, the frustration and the concerns about the changes that this project would present, especially in your backyards. And I do, when I when I hear some of the concerns about the project, I hear bigger community concerns that we as a as a city council, as commissions, as staff, as residents want to and are trying to work on. So safe streets is a big priority for the city council currently. And we, no matter if this project was here or not, we want cars to be going slower on the streets. So young people and adults and everyone can be safe on those streets. Or for air quality, we want to see electrification and other measures done to improve the air quality for everyone across the city and increase the use of public transit and all that. So cars are not used. Cars are left in the garages more. And so I appreciate those concerns, but I I also know that there are things underway and other projects that we as a city can do to address those broader societal community concerns. And to the the concern about changes to the downtown character. A lot of changes is coming this way. Our zoning process that we had alongside our housing elements is going to drastically change what downtown looks like and feels like. We have, you know, buildings of up to 10 stories will be downtown. And in part, we did zoning as a step down as we go from the center of downtown outwards because we know that we want a step-down process, not all of a sudden a drop down to residential. And so in our three around downtown community is a step down with several stories going down. And so I think as as we think about the long-term vision for our community, that this will not be out of place with potential changes that will be coming to downtown Menlo Park. And so I I even with with discretion, if we were, if we had any, I am supportive of this project. And I am supportive of the planning commission's approval.
So I too am supportive of the project as the state law requires this project. I do want to point out that one of the points of the appeal was that the planning commission conditionally approved the project and that there was no hearing on the final conditions. Those conditions, I believe, were actually put in place to respond to the concerns that you have with the project. And so the fact that there is the glazed glass, I'm looking at you shaking your head, perhaps not. That the glazed glass, the bike parking, the let's see what the reducing the amount of the hardscape and possibly adding a vertical architecture element. We're all in an attempt to make the project more conforming to the neighborhood and make it work better for the neighbors. So planning commissioners' interest. Okay, thank you. So I would also, I also support the project. Thank you.
I thank all of my council members for providing the feedback. I appreciate Vice Mayor Combs' perspective. Regardless of what I understand, regardless if I support the project or not, that it has not, the appeal, the appellant has not met the threshold that's required. And so I'm looking at what conditions can the city council put on the project that does not go against what the laws are. And so I wanted to find out from staff if it's possible, or even from the applicant, if it's possible to only have EV chargers in the parking? If that's possible to do? And can we make that a condition? So it would only be EV parking, and the goal is so that there's not exhaust fumes going into people's kitchens. So if that's possible.
I wouldn't be supportive of that because I I appreciate that flexibility is needed with different drivers, I with different homes and what they have. I would be supportive of really incentivizing and ensuring, you know, increasing more bike parking. And because we are so close to downtown too, I would hope that those trips are limited. And I wonder if there are other creative solutions rather than forcing or expecting residents to only because even if there's a charger, someone could choose to park a normal car. I'm not sure if there's a way to regulate that.
Well, I'm, again, I'm looking at ways because I am concerned about quality of life for the existing residents. And I know that this goal is to house people, but I don't believe that that is what actually is happening. These 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 units are not for sale. These are apartments. They're rentals, is my understanding. Can the applicant come up? Because I have a couple of questions. The art, not the architect, but the the actual applicant.
Through the mayor, if I can just provide one one quick clarification. So the their proposals for a subdivision for the buildings to become condominium units. There is an initial rental period that is a little bit up to the applicant as to how long that period is. But eventually, and I can also let the applicant speak to this, but eventually the idea is to sell the units individually. So it's a little bit of both. And that's, as I mentioned, some of the weeds we got into in the BMR agreement specifically on the rental versus ownership units. But there is that that flexibility.
So how would it work with a BMR unit going from a rental to a homeownership?
Yeah, so we we thought about that as part of the working out the details. Generally, we we wrote in protections for the tenant if they are, for the tenant at the time that the applicant intends to sell the the properties. So the applicant or the existing tenant, the existing BMR tenant would be able to stay in the unit through the term of their lease under the same BMR rental rate. So we did this to avoid any sort of displacement when the unit goes from a rental to a ownership. And then after that, the the applicant could sell the unit.
Thank you for that information. And I know there was mentioned by a few of the public comment that this project would serve mixed income. I do not believe that it'll serve mixed income. The unit prices, I don't think, will be affordable to all. And I don't think that the BMR will actually be affordable to anyone who actually needs a unit. So that's just my personal thoughts on there. So and I'm looking at, again, the existing residents. The project is going to move forward regardless if I vote no or two council members voted no. And so I'm trying to include in the conditions something that will help improve the existing residents' quality of life. So if you have any ideas, if things haven't been implemented that the neighbors have asked for. So there's a discussion that needs to be had around that. And for me, exhaust fumes in people's kitchen does impact quality of life. People are not going to ride their bikes just because you provide a bike parking. People drive. Cars exist. And so we just need to deal with, to me, what existing conditions are as opposed to trying to force people to change their habits. It doesn't work that way realistically. So those are my my comments. I didn't know if the applicant had some feedback they wanted to provide since this is your project.
Yeah, just to, yeah, sorry, just to touch on the EV chargers. We do plan to have EV charging one per unit. So we will, in in the parking structure, eight of the 12 parking spaces will have EV chargers. We've got bike parking. You know, we're definitely trying to think of of that as well.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Councilmember Nash?
I wanted to clarify, when I say I support the project, I basically do not see. I very much appreciate the neighbors' concerns and but I do not see a way to deny the deny the project. Thank you.
If I could just chime in really quickly, sort of piggybacking on what the mayor said. Since like, again, based on the advice of the city attorney, based on where the council is going, I think there's a sense of feeling or acceptance that there are certain constraints to our ability to severely like change this project. And it's not clear that even if we have that ability, that, you know, there would be the support to do it. But I do think there was like a missed opportunity here in the sense that like, if the residents had come with, because some conditions, right, because there is some leeway that the council has as it relates to conditions. And we know that the planning commission has already put some conditions on the project, and the city attorney suggested that we could. Again, as long as they didn't substantively change the project. But but what we got from the the residents expressing some concern today was was just a a sort of desire to see the project changed substantially or not happen. And it would have been great if, like, we had gotten from them some sense of what conditions, changes, minor changes to the project, they thought would have made it better. And and we don't, we don't have that. And so it's not, and again, not to say that that is something that a majority of council would have supported. But at least those sort of suggestions would have come in a space of which it seems that the council and the city attorney believes that it can operate. Whereas what we've gotten from residents are things that are outside of the space where we think we can operate.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Are there any other questions from council? So Dr. Neff, did you have another question or comment?
Thank you very much. And I think actually, just in the last few minutes, Mayor Taylor, we were actually feeling heard. So I actually appreciate that the thoughts of trying to find a way to condition things, which was not really a term or an idea that we knew was within our purview to bring. I think we have, as a group, come up with some things that might make things better. And I guess my question that I was trying to say is, how could we follow up on what you were proposing? Because there there are things that probably within our constraints that we now have might be able to modify, whether it's thinking about the noise from the gate at the front, thinking about more privacy shading on both sides of the building. The eastern side that was the one condition was only going to be on the one side of the building, not on the other. Actually, thinking about the plantings along the fence that we could get more privacy, could we work with the arborist? Things like that are things that aren't affecting density, aren't affecting denial of the project. So I think there are things within that range. Now, I don't know how that works going forward from here. And I appreciate that that might have been a good way to do that here. We thought we were really trying to address the appeal itself, which the conditioning wasn't really recognized as being part of that. So if there's a way that we can continue this conversation along your point of trying to make it better for the residents, we are engaged. We've been involved with this for the last couple of years, so we would do our best to try to come up with things that are rational and reasonable that might make it better for the entire community.
Thank you, Dr. Neff. I appreciate it. And without your appeal, you wouldn't be here having this conversation. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I wanted to follow up with either Mr. Peralta or Mr. Turner, just about what Dr. Neff just asked about following up. I know the city council is moving forward. Any conditions has to be listed tonight in our motion, is my understanding. Is there any leeway?
Yeah, so just to make one point. In the appeals section of the code, there is a time limit for which appeals need to be heard and acted on. Pushing out any sort of action on this would be outside of that time limit, it's a 75-day time limit, after which the planning commission's action stands without city council's action. I think that would be the the biggest constraint for for future meetings. There are some constraints within SB 330 about limiting meetings to five public hearings. This is the third. Another meeting would be a fourth. So that wouldn't be an issue. I think the big area issue is that time limit on the appeal before planning commission's action is is final.
I would be curious from the applicant of willingness to to explore in conversation outside of the appeal process, some light revisions like like that were suggested briefly here of adding more shading, adding more privacy vegetation between things. I'm curious if you could, if that might be another avenue, if this specific appeal process is limiting. But but before answering on that, happy to hear other council members' thoughts, but that's one idea I have and curiosity I have. So happy to have the other council members share if there's anything else. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, so from my opinion, yeah, as a developer, I'm, I'm not, you know, I want to meet and work with the neighbors. And we met with, with all of them over Zoom. We've talked through some of these issues before we got here. This was a while ago. And this is not, I, I've got no hard feelings and we're definitely willing to work with them if they see things that we can reasonably do. When we talk about privacy trees and things like that, that's already in our plan. We've got the landscape. We've got trees that will be fairly fast growing and give good privacy. And we're very open to other things that we can find mutually beneficial to help, you know, maintain the neighborhood and the privacy that they're looking for. Obviously, within the reasonable scope that it doesn't alter our project too much or, or change what we're trying to do. But it's, yeah, this, I'm this is not, no hard feelings. And I, I definitely appreciate this forum so everyone can discuss and, and talk through the options and, and I, I, we will be working with the neighbors going forward through all the construction and everything that happens. So I, I definitely am open to all of their input as we go forward. So, thank you.
So I'm wondering, is it reasonable to add the lock, the gated lock, making sure that that is as quiet as possible to the conditions? And possibly the shades on both sides of the building? And again, this is, I think in the, in what you've written, it, there was that there needs to be a strategy to work around it, that it's not a definite, however you would, we could include that.
Yeah, I'll just make one point. Any sort of mechanical equipment, so rooftop, ground mounted mechanical, that would include any sort of motors or anything for the gate. That would already be required to comply with the city's noise ordinance. So that would be reviewed through to the building permit review. To make sure, I, I think potentially there could be a condition about making it as low as possible. But like you said, understanding there are some constraints and building and some flexibility. I might maybe suggest not going down that road since we have standards in place to, to address the noise issue. As far as the obscured glass on the other side, I think that's definitely in, within the realm of possible conditions.
As far as the noise goes, something like a gate would be operated both in the, at any time during the day. So does that need to comply to the nighttime noise ordinance?
Effectively, yes. During the building permit stage, we'd look at spec sheets. So if there was, you know, any sort of conflict with the nighttime noise limitation, we'd, we'd probably, we would require some sort of noise mitigation to reduce it below that level.
Thank you. And I would just as far as the shaded glass and all, I would certainly want to have that worked with the architect and all to make sure that that's workable for the residences on, as well as the neighbors.
Councilmember Nash, does that mean not requiring it, but encouraging that in conversation with the architect? Okay.
And my follow-up procedural question is, do, do these items need to be included in our motion?
Any changes to the, the conditions of approval that the planning commission placed on the project, those would have to be in the motion.
Can you put that slide on the screen? Please?
If I may just clarify, so through the mayor, we're talking about Exhibit F of the staff report, the conditions of approval attached to Attachment A. Is that correct? You're speaking about the, the condition? Excuse me. That's what we're looking, okay. So perhaps City Clerk Heron, it looks like it's page 87 is the start of Exhibit A. That's helpful.
The specific conditions we'd be looking at are on page 90, is additional project specific conditions.
Yeah, go ahead. So I'm looking at the letter U with the obscured glass. And that says that it's on the right side of the building. Is that something that's reasonable to request for both sides of the building?
That seems reasonable.
It does. Okay, thank you. I feel a little hesitant on you making suggestions when I, I don't understand how the glass fits in. It's a very minute, very specific change that I don't feel comfortable talking about without understanding more about the project at a more detailed planning commission way. And so that's just something I want to flag about that one is, is I don't feel comfortable making a change on that one. I would encourage, I would want the developer and the architect to see about how to create more privacy for the neighbors. But I'm not sure if, if explicitly requiring this one option is, is the avenue that makes the most sense.
It seems like, well, actually, I would like to hear from Vice Mayor Combs, who has been a planning commissioner. Please.
Yeah, well, on the planning commission, we very specifically like all day long at specific conditions like this, sill height limits, obscure glass, in some cases, very specific, you know, plantings. My sense is that though here, Councilmember Nash is just asking for it to be added to the other side of the building. So there's already a condition related to this. And, and if we're talking about bathroom windows, right? And, and so there, there's multiple like kind of limitations here. So I personally am like comfortable with the addition because it, 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 it is, it is very much within the spirit and the confines of a condition that is already there. And, and I'm assuming the developer is okay with because they didn't come in here and say, oh, and by the way, we have, we have a major issue with this, this, this condition or for some reason it's structurally or architecturally impossible to, to actually like, you know, implement in some way. So I, I personally would be, would be fine with the, with the addition. Again, but opening up the opportunity for, like I say, the, the developer here to come and share if they think it's impossible to, to implement.
Yes, I, I too would be interested in hearing from the architect.
May I clarify, when we say the opposite side, are we talking about the front side or the back side? Okay, so the front of the building is facing northwest. The rear of the building is facing southeast. So in the planning commission hearing, we talk about the obscure glass facing southeast. Right? So are we talking about another side right now?
It would be the side facing the driveway. So facing the property to the left.
So it's the front of the building?
Left side.
Left side?
Hmm. If you're looking at the property from the other side.
The long side facing the front, okay. The long side facing the driveway. I believe that using the trees, the screening trees along the northwest property line might be more effective for privacy purpose. Because I think the, the view into the backyard is the, the, the issue. And because the building is quite far away from the northwest. And so to put screening trees right at the property line might do a better job for privacy purpose in our judgment.
I, I think my question would be, do you have some substantive objection to both? Great. Again, I, I'm, I'm trying to, your, your colleague, the developer came up and said that there was a desire to work with neighbors, you know, regarding things that you were reasonable, right? And, and so th- this request doesn't seem unreasonable necessarily. And, and so I think that that's the benchmark I'm using.
So I, I'm gonna start by saying, we did have this discussion in the planning commission meeting and they, they chose to, to decide that was closer to the, to the other units and not do the, the side. The, I think the main thing is we're definitely open to working with it, but there are a lot of windows. And we would want to be prescriptive as to what type of windows. If we're talking bathroom windows, that makes sense. But if it's a living room window, to have a certain portion of it obscure glass, that seems detrimental to the people that will move in there that are looking for a nice big window. So that, that's my, like, certainly open to discussing it. And when we see the layout and what works best to obscure and, and leave open to, to talk that through. But just, if we just say privacy over all of the windows up to a certain height, that doesn't seem, you know, good in my opinion.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Nash? Councilmember Dor.
Given that, I, I would feel most comfortable moving forward with the current condition U. But I'm curious about other ways to address the concerns that have been raised about privacy of adding more vegetation and I'm curious if there's other things that could be done to address some of these concerns, maybe here in the specific list of conditions or external to that as an ongoing conversation between the applicant and residents.
Mr. Turner, what's the 75th day for the appeal?
I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it is, I believe, this week, the 26th of April. Appeal. I believe it's the 11th. April 26th. July 10th and tomorrow.
Can I ask a procedural question? Is there a reason why the council is getting this with so little room to maneuver? As far as essentially, again, if instruction for the city attorney is that like unless we have a health or safety issue, that essentially we have to approve this. And if this appeal has like to be completed by tomorrow, then it seems like the council has like, like absolutely no room to operate here.
Through the mayor, I can, I can chime in on that in terms of, it's a matter of like overall agenda management. There's a number of business items in, in front of the city. And that, that's, that, that definitely factored into it based off of our meetings the past few months. We, we, we scheduled some special meetings to deal with some items. So I'd say it's overall volume of items coming forward to the city council.
And I just want to respond, I respect that response. City Manager Murphy, but also if I'm a resident sitting in the audience right now. I, I would be looking on this process like very skeptically, right? That that, that there was always going to be only one clear outcome. And and again, I, I appreciate, I know firsthand, the council agenda can be, can be challenging. But again, if, if I'm looking at this from, from the point of view of a resident, then and this comes to the council the day before, there, there is a time limit on it. It's, it's, it's really challenging for me. As, as we were talking earlier about the civic process and engagement, I think it would be really challenging for at least some members to think that that, that, again, like I said, that there was a possibility for anything other than, than one outcome. Because at this moment, we don't even have the ability to continue it. Like, right? We don't even have the ability to say, hey, residents, go and think about conditions. And, 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 and then it comes back to us. You, you know, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash?
So given the timing, what I would like to see is on you, that it actually does include both the right side and the left side. Because it was acceptable on the right side. And that if there's any discussion that we start from, basically if the applicant and the neighbors can work it out for something different, that's great. But that this actually is the starting place as opposed to not having it here and having the discussion start without this condition. So I would suggest, I would be in favor of denying the appeal, approving the tentative map and on item U to add that it is the right side and the left side elevations. And then if there's some agreement that can happen between the applicant and the neighbors that changes that at all, that's between, that's fine. But at least it starts out with this being the condition.
I'm curious if there are any other city permits or other requirements that that the applicant has to go through before the project moves forward. And I wonder if, is there any other wiggle room in the process to allow the residents to work with the applicant to think about conditions and try to figure out something more harmonious? I think that we're right now on the, the council's latching to these additional project specific conditions that were laid out by the planning commission because it seemed to be the one way where community insight could be reflected in without completely or changing the, the essence of the project, the height, the number of units, et cetera. And what I hear also in Councilmember Nash's comment is, is another way to try to figure out, okay, what else can we put into this, these specific conditions to address some of the concerns that have been raised by neighbors? And so I'm just curious, are there other ways, other avenues, other processes beyond just this appeal process by which the city can require? the city can require and encourage ongoing conversation between the developer and the neighbors?
What, once the discretionary permits are issued, the applicant still has to come back for a ministerial building permit and other related uh ministerial approvals under the California Building Code. And those are not vehicles to bring this project back to the city council. If there are any nuisance conditions or other health and safety conditions that arise in the future, then that's a basis to bring the project back before the city council.
I'm curious, does that mean that the conditions here are not actually required, that these are also optional in in the in the appeal process, or sorry, in the not the appeal, but in the planning commission conditional approval?
No, no, tho- those are but part of the project of approvals.
Gotcha, okay. But there's no other avenue, given that those other steps.
Once the entitlements are the discretionary entitlements are issued and the applicant relies on those entitlements, then they vest. Meaning, no, you don't get like a second bite at the apple on the um entitlements unless there's nuisance conditions or health and safety issues.
Thank you, city attorney and and city manager. And turning to our our staff, um based on the concerns that you've heard from city council, how do we move forward this evening? Where we can include some of the concerns that are expressed by the residents and it sounds like that the developer is willing to, within reason, accommodate. Because it doesn't sound like we can fix it here.
It it is within the the city council's discretion to modify the planning commission's actions, so that would include modifying you know, the conditions about the obscured glass potentially. I want to caution about adding new conditions in case they uh, you know, run afoul of of some of the state housing laws. But the the city council can modify conditions of approval.
So the the modification that I don't see here, besides the glass, is privacy. Privacy screening. So out of T, U, V, and W, where would that lie in order to not add an X?
That would lie in um U.
Okay. And I believe the applicant also mentioned that they had already planned to have trees and things, maybe that weren't represented in the pictures here. This is just a demonstrative demonstrative image um that would be included in the project. I I just don't feel comfortable throwing in changes to the specific condition that haven't been called out by the folks appealing the project before that seem at odds with the design of the building. Um and I appreciate the the desire to show that we on the dais are are listening to the residents and the concerns here, but I'm not sure if throwing this particular, very specific condition in is the right way to address those concerns. From from our position here on the dais, I'm not supportive of of that move.
Just, I mean, it seems as though we're we're hung up on this like uh putting this condition regarding the the obscure glass and into the other other side of the building. I do wanna, there are limits, as it relates to this obscure glass requirement. It it it's um sill heights that are less than three feet and like bathroom windows. And so in theory, it could raise the sill heights and you know, we would be talking and and there wouldn't be that that requirement for for the obscure glass until. I I mean, I I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Dor, but I I don't see how like again, these conditions are not substantive, because they can't be anything other than substantive, uh or they they can't be substantive. So I I like, I don't, I don't know that that this is is some some huge restriction. But um again, I I hear where you're coming from, but but I'll say from me, it's it's not a desire just to or be seen as listening to neighbors. Um but um a a desire to that that you have, I think. Um, you know, a a project, like I said, that overall could have been more thoughtful. And and it's that disappointed that those bringing this project before the city didn't make it more thoughtful. And so this is whether it's the planning commission or now the city councils, um attempt to make it more thoughtful. In a very, very minor way. And so to to me, that that's what's what's happening here, but I do think, again, I don't want to get us hung up here too much. If if there are support for it, then let's add it. Um and and move on. If there's not support, then then let's let's move on.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And and I'm supportive of the edit. And and based on what you just shared and just to touch briefly on what Councilmember Nash was discussing as far as the the process and explaining to appellants what they need to come to the table with the date of their hearing. And I think that would have been we probably would be on our last item right now instead. And so whatever we can do um in the future to change that, I think we need to put an effort there. Um Vice Mayor Combs, based on what you said earlier, actually two of your comments earlier, um I would feel really comfortable with you making the motion.
This is what I say for, we we need to move on. So let me, I I would lean towards staff and the city clerks specifically, so um so I can, I would make a motion to adopt the resolutions denying an appeal and upholding the planning commission's approval of the use permit. Architectural control permit and below-market housing rate agreement for an eight-unit residential building on a subcenter lot with regard to Minlo Lot with in our one, excuse me, the R-three apartment zoning district at uh one-two-two-zero Hoover Street. And approve the tentative map to subdivide the property into eight condominium units and one common area parcel and determine this action. And and hope that this action is categorically exempt from uh exempt under California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Fifteen-three-three-two class uh thirty-two exemption or infill development. And at the one additional condition that the obscure glass requirements existent on the right side of the building um also uh apply to the left side of the building. Someone can correct me where I got something wrong there.
I will second your motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs and a second by City Councilmember Nash to adopt a resolution denying the appeal, upholding the planning commission's approval of a use permit, architectural control and BMR housing agreement. Adopt a resolution approving a tentative map for a major subdivision to create eight condominium units and one common area parcel. And and then updating the obscure glass provision to both sides of the building. Any further city council question or discussion?
I just want to comment that I really appreciate uh Vice Mayor Combs, what you said earlier about uh needing to create actually fair and open processes where there can be moments to have more dialogue where maybe this kind of conversation could have happened a lot sooner. Um I resonate with that and I hope that uh we can reflect that and um I I I also know we have such busy agendas, so appreciate too that staff has a lot on their plates and a lot that they're trying to share back to us, but um I hope that these processes can uh create more openness and more accessibility for folks as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Willis in absent.
Thank you to the appellant, to the applicant, and to city staff. For your presentation and for your patience um through this process. Thank you. Our next item is item L-one. The first regular business item is adopt a resolution calling an election in the city of Menlo Park to be solidified, to be solid- uh solidified with the city council's next general municipal election on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, at submitting to the electors a ballot measure to increase the city's transit occupancy tax from twelve percent to fifteen and a half percent. By amending the city council, excuse me, by amending the Menlo Park Municipal Code, chapter three point sixteen Transit Occupancy Tax, establishing the policies and procedures for such an election, requesting that San Mateo County provide election services, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis and authorizing the filing of rebuttal argument. Here to introduce this item is our Assistant City Manager, Stephen Stulte.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, we will be discussing considerations for a local funding measure to maintain quality of life and services. So first, I'd like to highlight citywide engagement. Over the past several months, the city has engaged hundreds of residents and community members to gather their feedback specifically on their local priorities for city services and um perceptions of overall quality of life. According to our recently um independently commissioned community survey, we are very satisfied and humbled by these results. Eighty-five percent of residents are satisfied with Menlo Park's high quality of life that really stands out as a result in our region. And seventy-seven percent of residents are satisfied with our provision of local services as a city. I really want to take a moment to thank um the hundreds of community members that participated and shared their extremely valuable input on local priorities in those engagement efforts. Our residents also have a strong interest in maintaining um essential services, and these are the local priorities they identified. And I'm going to quickly run through the list. You will notice that many of these priorities directly link with the city council's identified top goals for this fiscal year. Maintaining street and pothole repair, enhancing our emergency preparedness for a variety of events, maintaining our parks, open spaces, sports fields, and children's play structures at our parks, keeping our public areas healthy, safe, and clean, maintaining parking recreation programs, and finally maintaining nine-one-one emergency response and preparedness. We also know that additional local funds are needed to maintain and provide services at the levels that our community expects and deserves. Over two-thirds of our residents um have shown interest in increasing the transient occupancy tax, or TOT, in order to help maintain that high quality of life. And I I want to emphasize that this type of um TOT, uh this type of tax is only paid by hotel and lodging guests. One important aspect of TOT or a voter-approved measure is that it gives Menlo Park control over local funds for our local needs. This allows us to be self-reliant and requiring proposed voter-approved funding to be spent for Menlo Park residents and local priorities. And over the last year, we have really highlighted volatility and other revenue sources. Um and voter-approved funding can actually cannot be taken by Sacramento, which is important in comparison to some of our other other revenue sources. Uh Menlo Park as a city has a very strong track record with fiscal accountability. Any additional voter-approved funds would uh continue in that tradition of accountability and transparency, and that includes citizen oversight, independent financial audits, and yearly reports to the community and city council, um especially around how funds are being spent uh to meet community priorities. So tonight's recommendation um is uh to place a locally-controlled transit occupancy tax measure on the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four ballot for voter consideration. I want to um highlight that without additional locally-controlled funds, the city may be forced to reduce or cut services um which affect quality of life. And we have highlighted um our financial outlook over the past year as well um in our five-year forecast. Uh the proposed measure would increase the Menlo Park TOT from the current twelve percent to a maximum of fifteen point five percent and generate um an estimated three point six million dollars per year for local needs. Um one thing I want to highlight is that the staff recommended approach is a phased approach uh over two years where January first, twenty-twenty-five, uh the TOT would increase from twelve percent uh to fourteen percent. And then January first, twenty-twenty-six, it would increase the remaining one point five percent to the maximum fifteen point five percent. And again, this TOT is paid only by hotel motel and also a short-term rental uh guests who visit our city. Um in order for the city council to place this ballot measure um for voter consideration, uh four votes of the council will be required. And that is all uh in my presentation for now. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stulte. Are there any clarifying questions from city council before we take public comment? City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment on this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item L-one, adopt a resolution calling an election in the city of Menlo Park to be consolidated with the city's next general municipal election on November fifth and submitting to the electors a ballot measure to increase the city's transient occupancy tax from twelve percent to fifteen and a half percent by amending Menlo Park Municipal Code, chapter three sixteen, establishing the policies and procedures for such an election, requesting that the San Mateo County provide election services, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis and authorizing the filing of rebuttal argument. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Okay, I am seeing currently four speakers. So this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item L-one. Okay, it looks like we have a total of four speakers. Our first speaker will be Avi Haxar, followed by Philip Meyer.
Good evening, everyone. Uh my name is Avi Haxar, and I represent the Stanford Park Hotel on one hundred El Camino Real. I was quite surprised to see a thirty percent increase on TOT, uh which is uh extremely, extremely high, uh going from twelve percent to fifteen point five percent. Um I just wanted to bring uh information to uh this council that uh in uh twenty-seventeen, we were running occupancies of seventy-six percent. And a good, healthy economy, serving to the mid-seventies, is a good occupancy for upscale to um uh luxury properties. Um unfortunately, uh we have not reached those pre-pandemic occupancy levels as of yet. And to impose this kind of a tax on that this amount at this time uh just doesn't seem correct. We um have gone from, you know, seventy-six percent, we have just in twenty-twenty-three gone to uh sixty-five percent. So we're still lagging eleven percentage points behind. Uh with the economy, with the wage increases, with a lot of other hotel rooms coming around in this area outside of uh Menlo Park. Uh we are going to be put in a disadvantageous position. And um I just personally think this is not the right time. Um but if uh uh we do want to look at this, I think a more approachable um would be between twelve and fourteen percent and probably have a phased uh approach to it, which would be probably one percent, like we said, for next year. See how this works out. See if the occupancy is See how this works out, see if the occupancy is coming back, and then have the second phase. But to impose 30%, 3 and 1/2 points is quite substantial. We're having a difficult time at this moment getting the occupancy up to the 76%. By imposing this on us, you're creating a bigger problem. So thank you for listening to us, and hopefully, we can probably get a compromise on this. So thank you.
Our next speaker will be Philip Meyer, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hearing us. I think you stole my notes, did you? Because I have the same sort of feeling that Avi has. I mean, we've... And my name is Philip Meyer. Sorry, I'm Managing Director of Rosewood Sand Hill, top of Sand Hill Road. We've enjoyed a very strong relationship with Menlo Park City for 15-plus years now. So it's been a wonderful partnership. And I think, you know, just gauging the tax increase on our guests that currently gives Menlo Park that competitive advantage over, let's say, Palo Alto really helps us coming out of the pandemic and being able to sort of position ourselves back to occupancies in the 70% that Avi mentioned. So we're in the same boat as many of the other hotels in the area. And we'd just request, if there is to be an increase, a more phased increase over multiple years to see if... to see how it goes to help us get back to those occupancies that we will enjoy. And I mean, Rosewood is, I think, a substantial contributor of over $3 million to the TOT. So it's a... We were just asked that that consideration be made. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Adina Levin.
Dear DAS, I'm Jenny Michelle, longtime D3 resident. Personal comments: I want to thank Mr. Mouldz for his written comment. I professionally and personally respect his work and value his family for being a solid neighbor. #MALittleLeague, yeah! Ensuring our local businesses and hotels are stabilized is a critical priority. However, a business can enjoy a tax break for losses, whereas individuals like me who rent and have not had a pay increase from employer for years don't get to enjoy that subsidy or relief. We live the loss daily. The forecasted Menlo Park budget shortfall has been known for months. We, as constituents and stakeholders, have had the opportunity to provide input on how to address the shortfalls on various occasions. The scope and requirements for public services have increased considerably. However, the appetite to invest in public infrastructure has waned for decades. The constraints from the 2008 recession are still rippling 15 years later. It would be helpful to provide a recommendation on how to address the funding shortfall. Either way, the voters have the ultimate say, and increasing the TOT is an easy sell than other options. Unless somehow, together, we can collectively change the hearts of fellow homeowners, are you game? If you can refrain from going for one dinner at Sundance Steakhouse, the Los Altos Grill, Fleming's, or Madera, it would help bridge the funding gap. A $500 dinner or two $250 dinners multiplied by 7,200 single-family homes would be the $3.6 million per annum. That's easy, no? Or, shock, horror, help me to get homeowners on board for infill density, thereby increasing the resident and sales tax base. See what I'm saying? Or we could cut services. Do you prefer the significant loss of police, park services, road maintenance, disaster response, or city staff? Which option do you prefer to generate the $3.6 million annually? I vote for the TOT and would help campaign for that. Thank you.
And our final speaker will be Adina Levin.
Hello, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, and wanted to thank the city council and staff for looking into avenues to maintain the level of the city services and the city priorities. And the support for the... It's gratifying to see the support shown for the TOT and the priorities that were described, including, you know, being able to support the emergency response, to be able to pave our streets and maintain safety, to be able to maintain our parks and maintain our emergency services. These are all really, really critical, and this is something that our community does not want to see. Those level of, you know, critical and welcome services in our community degrade. Would be, you know, interested in hearing what the consequences and implications would be about phasing, as described by some of the comments. It's also the case that the, you know, other nearby communities also have, you know, TOT. So the, you know, level of competition, you know, people are staying where they are for reasons of being close to where they want to be. So I think that the kind of secular trends of recovery hopefully will continue as long as we have taxes that are not, you know, wildly out of line with someone wanting the convenience. So thanks again for pursuing this direction. Seems like a good direction to maintain the critical and welcome services that our community depends on. Thank you.
Seeing no more hands or cards. Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you for the public comments. And Mr. Stoltay, did you have...
Thank you, Mayor. I neglected to highlight one recommended change that staff are bringing forward tonight to the ballot measure question. And I will share a screen and show you the red line version. You will see towards the end of our question, we have providing an estimated $3.6 million annually. Instead of the word additional, we think that better captures the projected nature of the revenue.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the DAS, just want to follow up with council members. Do you have any questions?
Yes, a question about the estimations. In the work that the staff and external folks did, did they take into account the rebound from COVID on occupancy rates and how that affects the potential TOT here?
We did. We used our latest TOT revenue numbers to project forward. And that's how we... That's the basis in our five-year forecast as well.
Latest is in 2023, 2022?
2023... Well, for 2023, 2024 fiscal year, we have data through April, May. So we're almost there with the rest of the data.
Thank you.
And Mr. Stoltay, what... Do you know what percentage of the TOT comes from the short-term rentals?
Yes, I can... Give me one second on that one.
Thank you.
It's approximately 4%.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. What would be the consequences of phasing in the 14... Having the 14%... Actually, let me start over. I know that right now, the ballot measure is suggesting that the 14% goes into effect if it passes January 1st, 2025. So next January. And then that the 15 and 1/2% would go into effect January 1st, 2026. If we were to delay the 15% until 2027, what would be the impact? If we were to delay it till 2028, what would be the impact?
Sure, I can answer that. So... And if I could back up and just tell you what our baseline projection would show first. So without any intervention, 100% of our emergency contingency reserve would be depleted in fiscal year 2028-29. So if we were to delay the full TOT to 15.5% to January 2027, that reserve would be 82% depleted in fiscal year 2029-2030. So one year later. But nearly completely depleted. In addition, our economic stabilization reserve would remain fully funded. Without intervention, 70% of that reserve is depleted in fiscal year 2029-30, and that's the last year of our five-year forecast. For the other...
Actually, can I just... So you're saying 70% depleted, so only 30% remains?
Right, yes. And we measure based on minimum funding levels for the reserve account. And then for the other scenario you mentioned, which was a delay to the full 15.5% to January 2028, our emergency contingency reserve would be depleted 86% in the last year of our five-year forecast, which is 2029-30. And then our economic stabilization reserve would still remain fully funded in that last year of the forecast.
Could you... I had written down that the economic stabilization was at 70% depleted.
That is without any intervention.
Without any intervention.
That's our current baseline in our forecast without intervention. So with a delay of raising the TOT to the full 15.5% in 2027, that reserve... The economic stabilization reserve would be fully funded. And then with the delay to 2028, it would remain fully funded too.
So for the... The economic stabilization fund does not... Is not impacted if we delay? But the emergency reserve fund is greatly impacted?
Correct. The emergency contingency reserve is still impacted.
I have another scenario. I'm curious if you have. So it was mentioned by one of the commentators, what if we just raised it to 14%? And so not including the further bump up to 15.5%? What would that mean? And I think you might have just mentioned this since some of the numbers you shared, but if you could put a finer point on that, that would be helpful.
Yes, I could. So a 14% increase and with no further increase, our emergency contingency reserve would be fully depleted in fiscal year 2029-30. And our economic stabilization reserve would be depleted in fiscal year 2029... Let's see. 23% of the economic stabilization reserve would be depleted in fiscal year 2029-30. So nearly fully depleted in the last year of the five-year forecast.
Do you by any chance have a slide that you could put up on this?
Just give me a few seconds, then I can show something. Are you... Would you like to start with one of the scenarios? If you could point me to one that you're interested in?
That it stays... That we have 14% in 2025, 2026, 2027, it kicks to 15 and 1/2%?
Okay. Okay, so here on the screen is the scenario where TOT would raise to 14% in 2025 and then two years later to the full 15.5%. This is our emergency contingency reserve. You can see the depletion over the course of our five-year forecast. And then alternatively, you can see our economic stabilization reserve remaining funded.
And could you say what that red line is?
That red line is our minimum funding level for the reserve account based on our reserve, the city council's reserve policies.
Could you please show the first chart? Thank you.
Could you please explain what the emergency contingency fund is for so that everybody is aware of that? Thank you.
Give me one second, and I can pull up our reserve policy. I could continue searching for that if we want to continue the discussion, and then I'll let you know when I pull it up.
But Vice Mayor Combs, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I'll just provide some general comments, if that's okay. Or do we want to wait to get through all the questions?
Comments are welcome.
Okay, totally cool. First, I want to thank the public commenters. You know, specifically, you know, call out that obviously, we appreciate having the Rosewood and Sanford Park Hotels as part of our community. Not only for much beyond the tax revenue generation, but as great community gathering spots and also as really engaged and supportive members of the community historically. And so, you know, very much appreciate your public comments and understand where they come from. I do think it's important to set this agenda item in a broader context. And the broader context is that the city has faced, you know, the removal of... Or the discontinuation of revenue sources that it has depended on for decades. One being the UUT, which the city is no longer collecting. And then the other is this, you know, very complicated formula by which we get funding from the state through E-RAF. And, you know, San Mateo County is one of two counties in the state by which is relies on the state to make direct payments. And the state, given its own budget constraints, has decided not to prioritize making those payments. It is disappointing. But going back to an earlier agenda item, there is sometimes little we can do with regards to forcing the state to do things that we would prefer it to do. And so... And so I think it's important, again, like I say, to set this in the context. This isn't... This is a... This represents additional revenue for this tax. But in many ways, it's restorative tax revenue. And that, again, they're tax funding sources that the city has relied on for some time that have been discontinued. I do also want to point out that there is a phasing here, right? And so there is an appreciation of impacts, even at the highest that it gets to, that brings us at a level with Palo Alto and other cities. It does not put us in a new class. This is not, at this rate, an unfamiliar. an unfamiliar would be unfamiliar to to travelers, to those staying in hotels, looking at that that rate. Again, like I said, it's it's a rate that other communities have. And I would also point out that the measure the council takes tonight, if it decides to follow staff recommendation, doesn't implement the tax, right? But it puts it on the ballot and allows residents to make that determination ultimately of whether they want this this tax to go into place. So you know, all those are my my comments. I am supportive of of tax, excuse me, of of staff direction here for the reasons I've outlined.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you. I have a quick follow-up question to staff about the choice with the proposed phase in, which I think, as Vice Mayor Combs said, is trying to be reflective of the impact of an increased tax of why two percent the first year and then one point five the next year versus one point five and then two percent the year after that?
In looking at, and this is an attachment to the staff report, and looking at other cities' T O T rates, we saw fourteen percent was a more common rate in our area. So achieving that rate in the first year and then after that, providing a little more time to get to fifteen point five, that's the rationale behind it.
Thank you for sharing that. I resonate with everything that Vice Mayor Combs shared and am supportive of us moving this to the citizens to the side. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
So I am also supportive, and I am wondering for my other two colleagues what timing you are looking at, whether you're talking, whether you're in favor of going with the staff recommendation, which just gives two thousand and twenty five for fourteen percent and two thousand and twenty six for fifteen and a half, or whether you would stagger the fifteen and a half percent a little bit more.
Given the estimates that were shared, the scenarios and the graphs, I would be in favor with what the staff have suggested as opposed to any adjustments there.
Councilmember Nash, if you have, I don't have any of my own ideas separate from staff suggestion. If if you have some, I'm open to hearing them.
I would be supportive of staff's suggestion. I was also listening hard and have had a few emails from short-term rental owners who were concerned about this. And so I would not be adverse to staggering it, holding it fourteen percent for an extra year before we go to fifteen and a half percent. But I would, if others are supportive of the one-year the staff's recommendation, I would go right along with that. And I guess when I hear from other, from some of the short-term rental owners who are concerned about the hardship in this and that this will deter people from staying in our city. And one person was saying what we really need to do is to spruce up some spruce up some of the parks in downtown. My response is actually, this is how we need to do it because as Vice Mayor Combs laid out, we are we have less revenue coming in because of the T O T, I'm sorry, the U U T and also the state E R A F funds. So we need to do something to shore this up so that we actually maintain the quality of life in Menlo Park and make it an attractive and welcoming place to visit. So this is actually achieving that end.
If I could, I mean, like Councilmember Nash, I would be open to the additional year delay. I don't think Councilmember Dorr is there, and so it'd be interesting where the the mayor is at as, you know, a indication that we are listening to the business community here. You know, when it comes to like, you know, I appreciate with short-term rentals, that situation that it is for some members in our community, important part of their income and important revenue stream. Again, to the extent to which those short-term rentals represent four units that could be rented out long term. They actually add to one of our major problems, you know, which is housing availability. And so I'll be frank, I'm less interested in in acquiescing to those concerns. But again, the hotel community, I do understand that like this is, again, I would point out that it is, it brings us on par with Palo Alto. But I do reflect that for for some of their customers, like certainly some of their customers will 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 notice it. I would beg to guess that the vast majority won't notice it, but certainly I appreciate that some will.
I just want to echo that we're talking about one point five percent. So if you have a hotel room for three hundred dollars, that's four point five dollars. And so I think that's why thinking about, you know, that's one tiny number that's not thinking about everything aggregated together, but thinking about how small that number is and what a big impact that will have on decreasing the emergency and economic stabilization funds, I it doesn't feel worth it to to take that risk.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. I am supportive of having our our citizens vote, our residents in Menlo Park vote on increasing the T O T. I am concerned about the the phasing, so the longer I'd be supportive of stretching it out a little longer. I appreciate you coming in earlier. I think you were the first person here, and so you've waited the longest to hear this item. So I appreciate that you being here and and also the other owner, Mr. It's Phillips, Mr. Myers, I believe. So thank you. Thank you both for being here, but I am definitely in support of having a longer increase period. And also, I'm interested in, I know that the city has, does revenue share. Maybe we need to revisit some of our contracts that have revenue share in it so that we are looking at all of our opportunities where the city could be whole so that we can provide the services we'd like to to our residents.
I'm curious if, could I please call on Mr. Stoltz, if you could share a little bit more about the impacts of a delayed increase and what that means for the the emergency contingency as well as the economic stabilization?
Yes, absolutely. I think one of the scenarios that was highlighted earlier was an increase to fourteen percent in January of two thousand and twenty five and then delaying the the rest of the increase to the maximum of fifteen point five percent to January two thousand and twenty seven. So two years later. Just to run through those impacts again. You know, without intervention, our emergency contingency reserve is depleted in fiscal year two thousand and twenty eight, twenty nine. That's year four of our five-year forecast. With that revised T O T with the two-year delay to fifteen point five, eighty-two percent of that reserve would be depleted in fiscal year two thousand and twenty nine, thirty. So that's a year later. That's the fifth year of our forecast.
Eighty-two percent depleted.
Yes. And then for our other reserve, the economic stabilization reserve would remain fully funded under this scenario with T O T. Our baseline, however, would be seventy percent depleted by the end of our five-year forecast.
Okay. And does this have to be reflected in a language that is would be put on the ballot? Because I I'm thinking also about the importance of simplicity when things are on the ballot, and I worry that if things are too complicated, folks will be more confused. It will be harder for them to assess this fairly. And so I'm curious, as the staff in that independent review and in the message testing, was this kind of scenario ever tested? Do we know if this would at all? Where that would go?
Well, you know, I think we're amenable to phasing. It is built into the ordinance text, and so that's what we would revise tonight if there were changes to the phasing approach. The ballot measure question itself would still be a question of fifteen point five percent, the maximum. And then the phasing would be built into the ordinance.
And the ordinance is something that we, the city council decides that what that would look like if the if the tax were to pass?
And, you know, I could defer to our assistant city attorney tonight to answer any ordinance questions.
Sure, thanks. Hi, councilmembers. Mary Wagner, your assistant city attorney. So as Mr. Stoltz indicated, the ballot question remains the same, and the phasing is built into the ordinance. The ordinance is actually enacted by the voters. So they will see that that ordinance language as well. It will be included in the the ballot materials that are submitted, the election input. So I don't think it will confuse the ballot question, but the voters will have access to that information because it's included in the ordinance itself. And as you know, the city attorney is being directed to prepare an impartial analysis that can also include a description of the phasing approach.
And I just a clarification of of how concerned would city staff be about a phased approach? There were results in this eighty-two percent depletion because that sounds like a big number. And so as someone who's trying to take care of the fiduciary needs of the city, that sounds quite nerve-wracking to me.
You know, our our five-year forecast does have a structural deficit that is concerning. However, even with a phased approach, we are still making improvements in the spend down of our reserve funds over time. This would be one budget strategy of many that we would implement over the long term to address that structural deficit. So we're we're open to a phased approach.
I'm still not supportive of that. I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, and that's what I would like to motion and try to move this evening.
The difference between that one year of implementation, I had written down was four percent difference. What is the difference between implementing the fifteen and a half percent in two thousand and twenty six versus two thousand and twenty seven?
Okay, I'll just do quick comparisons so you can compare the the spend down rates. So we'll start with fifteen point five percent in two thousand and twenty six. Sixty-nine percent of the emergency contingency reserve is depleted in fiscal year two thousand and ninety nine, thirty. That's the last year of our five-year forecast. Fifteen point five percent in January two thousand and twenty seven, eighty-two percent of the emergency contingency reserve is depleted in the last year, same year, last year of our five-year forecast. In both of those scenarios, economic stabilization reserve remains fully funded through the five-year forecast term.
Could you repeat that one more time just so it's?
Sure, sure. So let's start with economic stabilization reserve. It remains fully funded in both scenarios. Okay. So the emergency contingency reserve, sixty-nine percent is depleted over the five-year forecast in the last year, fiscal year two thousand and ninety nine, twenty thirty, with fifteen point five percent in two thousand and twenty six. So that's sixty-nine percent is depleted. Fifteen point five percent in two thousand and twenty seven, eighty-two percent of that reserve is depleted in the same fiscal year. So it's sixty-nine percent versus eighty-two percent depletion.
Just a quick clarifying question for the city attorney, for the assistant city attorney. So this is a, the actual phasing is based on an ordinance, though that is passed by voters and the council doesn't have the ability to change that ordinance?
Once the once the ordinance is adopted by the voters, the any change to increase a tax would have to be submitted to the voters.
What about like, so not increasing, but like going in other direction, let's say in like ten years, a city council wanted to decrease it back to fourteen percent, would it need to go to voters?
So currently, under the constitution and the laws of California, only tax increases have to be submitted to the voters, not decreases.
Okay. And so then I'm going to throw another one at you. So if at some point it goes up to fifteen point five and the council lowers it to fourteen, if another future council wants to increase it again to fifteen point five, would that have to go to voters or because it had the authorization up to fifteen point five? You know, you can always go at least up to fifteen point five.
I think it would be the latter, but I think we would have to be very clear in whatever policy direction or or direction the council gave about the duration of a, you know, reduction, if there was one in the future, or and the fact that you've already got authorization up to fifteen point five and that there's a temporary, you know, whatever the reasoning is, if there's, you know, a need for a temporary reduction, that we would lay that out in the action that the council takes when it made the reduction.
Thank you. Councilmember Dorr, if that was a motion that you made, I am happy to second it.
It was a motion. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I apologize. I wanted to just clarify, and I believe the motion did include the staff recommendation to the modification to the ballot measure language that included extended, the word extended was changed for in that language. So sorry, sorry for jumping back in there. Just wanted to make sure we had that.
Okay.
And just clarifying, the word was estimated.
And my friendly amendment is to look at other budget strategies, specifically look at our contracts with revenue share with folks that provide services. I mean, it's pretty much the same that our hotels do. Well, direction to consider.
Madam Mayor, I think that needs to be a separate motion. This this item is just to adopt, to place the measure on the ballot, and that is not something that would go on the ballot unless you're, if I'm understanding, you're
No, it wouldn't go on the ballot.
Correctly. Okay.
Okay.
So we could take up this motion, and then if you wanted to provide further direction, we could do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So if I'm understanding this correctly, if we follow the staff's recommendation, which is fourteen percent in two thousand and twenty five, fifteen and a half percent in two thousand and twenty six, but if for some reason we decided that it was, there was a great, there was unintended consequences that we had not foreseen, we could actually continue the fourteen percent through an ordinance through a new ordinance. However, the reverse would not be true. We couldn't we couldn't bump it up early, but we could delay the bump up if if for some reason we decided that that was a really prudent way to go. Does that make sense? So if we if we go with staff's recommendation and we see there are unintended consequences that for some reason we decide that we want to delay the implementation of the fifteen percent for another year, that is doable under with the staff's recommendation because we are reducing the rate rather than increasing the rate.
Correct. I think the council could take an action in the future to determine an application of a lower rate moving forward without a vote of the people under the current law. Only the vote is only required to increase a tax amount.
Thank you. In that case, hopefully, we would never have to do that, but it is, it does give us more options. I would also support this. The staff's recommendation. So I believe it would go, it would be fourteen percent if if it passes, if the voters approve it, it would be fourteen percent in two thousand and twenty five. it, it would be 14% in 2025. It would be 15 and a half percent in 2026.
Correct.
And that is even though the language in the proposed ballot language here says from 12% to 5 15.5, it doesn't say to up to 15.5?
And i- if you look at the text of the ordinance, there it explains the the actual transition from year to year. And that would be on the second page of the ordinance attachment. It's an exhibit to the resolution.
Yeah. So just to be totally clear, the ballot question that says that you were just referencing that says 15.5%, that, you know, appears on that appears on that first page of the ballot, and what the voters are approving is the text of the measure. And the text of the measure explains what councilmember Nash just articulated, which is 114% in 2025 and 15.5% in 2026.
And there is an option if that we could, if needed, in 20 before it goes up to 15 and a half percent in 2026, the council could pass an ordinance that would maintain it at 14%.
I'll defer to Mary if she disagrees in in the way I frame this. But yes, the council can take a legislative action to reduce imposition of the tax without going back to the voters.
My my concern is that we raised the tax too soon. And my intention is not to harm any businesses finances. So I would like a slower approach. And I'm sure we're all mindful that there's only four of us here, which means all four of us have to support it to move it forward. And I'd be supportive in a slower approach. And then also looking at other budget strategies. We have other revenue shares that we can consider that are not for us right now.
I completely agree, Mara, that we need to be looking at other budget strategies. And I am supportive of giving that direction separately from a motion here. As I believe that staff has already indicated that they are exploring other options, and I'm happy to support another direction to encourage that movement.
But what I'm also saying is that I I will support putting this measure on the ballot if we have a slower approach to raising the rates for our TOT and looking at other strategies, which I can give direction after we vote on this item.
Mayor Taylor, I'm curious if you'd be amenable to the idea of raising it to 1.5% in the first year as opposed to the whole 2%. And then the following year, in the ordinance tax having the 2%. And that would still address the 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 need that councilmember Nash mentioned, that the city council would have the discretion to come back with a new ordinance to delay the increase to that final 2%?
I would not support that.
Okay.
The other Yes. The reason why is when I look at the attachment C, where it lists where towns currently are, Menlo Park is in, I think that we easily could or should be in the 14% range. And I think that that's and so I do not understand why we would go to 13 and a half when it looks like there's a there is a one, nine cities right now that are currently at 14% that I think we easily fit within that group of cities. And so there's no reason to go to 13 and a half percent in at this time. I think 14% is the right approach for the first step.
So if I can, Mayor, when you're looking at an additional delay, are you saying to the lines of what councilmember Nash was talking about earlier, which is delaying an additional year from 14 to 15.5? So essentially, then it'll be a two year delay, or we'll be at 14, two years before we get to 15.5?
Yes.
Okay.
We can also keep in mind, we will have other hotels coming online soon. I'm just
And I wonder if that was included in the analysis that was done. But I'm curious, because what I worry about is is delaying increases. And I wonder, what if it was a so you do the 14 in the first year, but then you split, split the difference, you have 1.5 left, do 0.75 in the second year, and then another 0.75 in the third year? So you do over three years, get to 15.5? So the first year is 14, the second year is 14.75, and the final year is 15.5? I don't think that the percentages, you know, the percentages that are added on at the end of a hotel bill, right? They're not, I don't think the the cleanness of a number matters as much unless, please, someone correct me if I'm wrong.
I mean, I would just if I can't correct you if you're wrong. So that's not what I'm chiming in to do. I would say that like, I'm aligned with where you are, Councilmember Dorr. But if but if the mayor needs another year, then I think I'm fine with saying, let's just give it another year. This is, you know, about the long game and and overall sort of showing up the city's finances for the unlimited future. I mean, this is a new tower, a new rate that in theory doesn't go away. And so once, if it takes a next year to get that 15% 55%, then it takes a next year. But once it's there, it's there. And 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 I think it begins to have a enormous amount of benefit for for the city and having that additional revenue. And so that's, but I will say that like, again, directionally, we're aligned. But I'm very comfortable with that delay if that's what the mayor needs and 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 her support is is needed. And so and so that's where I'm at.
I appreciate that. And Mayor Taylor, if that's what is needed, I'm amenable to that.
I'm just going to try one more time. That I actually was at the same place you were. But if we stay with the staff's recommendation, it gives us the option to go down if we need to that second year and stretch it out. But it also, if everybody is coasting along, businesses are doing great, hopefully, hotels are doing great, hopefully, then we actually have the revenue coming in a year earlier. And so it, to me, going with the staff's recommendation, and I have changed, is actually gives us more options.
Through through the mayor, if I if I could.
Yes.
One other idea we threw around earlier is proposing some language that we'd add to the ordinance that specifically says the city council may by resolution adjust the rate of the tax upwardly or downwardly without a vote of the people, provided that the rate does not exceed 15.5%. So that we are actually memorializing in the ordinance, what we've been talking about tonight, which is the council could reduce the rate if it is seen necessary. So that's just one of our option if that is is of any assistance.
That works for me.
I I would also be supportive of that. But city attorney Dordy, I I am getting a little bit UUT flashbacks about these like, you know, additional qualifications. So as as long as it's clear that it's a may, and there's not something that the council has to do every year to make sure something is instituted or make certain findings, as long as you can personally promise me that, then then I'm okay with that that additional language.
I will never personally promise you anything. But no, with the language is specifically crafted in a very different way than UUT. I'm glad you're raising that. It does not contain any conditions or requirements on necessity and very clearly says may by resolution. So to be very specific, our proposal would be to add to the end of of ordinance section 3.16030 imposition, the language that I just read, which says, and this would be add to the very last sentence, the city council may by resolution adjust the rate of the tax upwardly or downwardly without a vote of the people, provided that the rate does not exceed 15.5%. We did look around at some other somewhat recent tax measures that included similar similar language in other cities in the area. This is language that we've seen like commonly used in the past, too. So.
Thank you. I believe we have a motion and a second on the table already. Do we need to redo the motion?
I am happy to make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation, along with the adjustment to estimated in the direct language.
Are we also including the update to the ordinance language that the city council may?
Yes.
Thank you. And we have a second.
Did I second this, right?
Yes. Yeah, we're doing it one more time. All right. So I have a motion on the floor by city councilmember Dorr and a second by Vice Mayor Combs to adopt a resolution calling an election in the city of Menlo Park to be consolidated with the city's next general general municipal election, November 5, 2024, and submitting to the electors a ballot measure to increase the city's transient occupancy tax from 12% to 15 and a half percent by amending Menlo Park Municipal Code Chapter 3.16, establishing the policies and procedures for such an election, requesting that San Mateo County provide election services, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, authorizing the filing of rebuttal argument, and including the updated ballot measure question language, and including in the ordinance language, allowing the city council to amend the rate via resolution. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with city councilmember Woolison absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and I also would like to give direction as far as budget strategies, looking at other contracts that the city has that there's where there's a revenue share. Thank you.
Perfect. So in the minutes, I can reflect that direction?
Thank you. Our next agenda item is L2, last regular business item, adopt a resolution to amend the salary schedule effective July 14, 2024, and adopt a resolution to approve a side letter of agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 521 to incorporate these salary schedule changes and appropriate additional funds. Here to introduce this item is our administrative service director, Brittany Mellow.
Good evening, city council. So the item before you for your consideration tonight is two resolutions or are two resolutions to amend the salary schedule and to approve the side letter of agreement with SEIU. The salary schedule lists the salary ranges for all of the authorized job classifications in accordance with state law. The salary schedule was originally built to include a consistent 5% differential between each salary step in the salary range. Over time, this differential drifted below 5% for the majority of classifications due to payroll system changes, rounding, and various salary adjustments. And that difference just compounded over time. So the proposed salary schedule amendments also incorporate adjustments to address compaction issues that arose and to ensure internal alignment. So staff has prepared a revised salary schedule that ensures that even 5% between salary steps and internal alignment for all classifications that are represented by SEIU. Staff and SEIU have mutually agreed to these proposed changes. And pending the city council's approval this evening, staff will proceed with executing the proposed side letter of agreement with SEIU to implement these changes. The total fiscal impact for these amendments are $376,039. After accounting for a place voter that was included in the fiscal year 2425 budget, staff is requesting an additional appropriation of $248,522. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from city council members before I take public comment? City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment on this item?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And before we do that, if we could just take a look at the time, asking the city council if we can extend the meeting beyond 11:00 PM. Seeing nods. Okay, thank you. All right. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item L2, adopt a resolution to amend the salary schedule effective July 14, and adopt a resolution to approve a side letter of agreement with SEIU 521 to incorporate these salary schedule changes and appropriate additional funds, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item L2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? So at this time, I will entertain a motion. And just to for clarity, we're voting on these independently, these two items, or is it one motion?
The salary schedule amendments include, or the side letter will be approved because the salary schedule is approved. So one is dependent on the other.
So my question is, I'd like to vote no on the salary schedule and yes on the side letter. Is that possible?
The side letter only consists of salary schedule changes. So I I'm not sure that would be possible.
Thank you for for the clarifying. I'll entertain a motion on this item. I'll move.
And I can second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by city councilmember Nash and a second by city councilmember Dorr to adopt a resolution to amend the city of Menlo Park salary schedule and adopt a resolution to approve a side letter of agreement with SEIU 521 to incorporate these salary range adjustments and appropriate an additional $248,522 from the general fund unassigned fund balance in the fiscal year 202425 budget. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
No.
And the motion passes with city councilmember Woolison absent and Mayor Taylor dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Our next agenda item is item M, informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. At this time, Ms. Heron, can you take public comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, M1, city council agenda topics, M2, city council agenda topics, M two, V H C C operational updates, or M three, community-wide electrification program progress report. If you are in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating online, you can engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on informational items M one through M three. No hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So I just wanted to make a comment on M three, which is the community-wide electrification program, and that I really appreciate the excellent staff work on this important project and the strong partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy staff. And I also want to give a shout out to Senator Josh Becker for championing the state funding of four point five million dollars for this project.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Are there any other comments from council members on our informational items? All right, moving on to item N, which is our city manager's report. City Manager Justin Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, tonight is the last council meeting for about a month. So the next council meeting would be, uh, August thirteenth, our next regular scheduled council meeting, so. Thank you for all the work up to this point, and hopefully, uh, people can enjoy a, a little bit of a, a break, and then looking forward to return to full agendas again in the August timeframe. So thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. Our next item is item O, city council member reports. Are there any city council members that want to report out since our June twenty-fifth meeting?
So at the S B W May, South Bay Waste Management Agency, we met and talked about insurance, and there was really good news there, which was unexpected, which is that the insurance rates for our waste collection have dropped dramatically, and in large part, that's due to the new fire suppression technology that we had approved the meeting before. And then in Peninsula Clean Energy, the meeting, we talked about budgets, and we approved new rate tables and rates for that. The, all customers will have at least a five percent discount off of E G and E energy rates, which has been the standard since Peninsula Clean Energy started, but just to reiterate that everyone will receive a five percent off discount. Also, there is, there will be an adjustment to the premium for the ECO one hundred, the cleanest, most renewable product that Peninsula Clean Energy offers, and that is to adjust the premium to what is costing the company to to purchase the, that energy, and the that is used by a very small number of people and many of our business climates, clients, and as well as the municipalities such as Menlo Park, so that P C E will be talking to staff about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other report outs? Right, at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.